13-01 West Washington.
Mr. Mayor.
Petitioner is Springfield Village LLC.
I don't think your mi-- I don't think our mics are working, sir.
Did you push your button?
I don't think no-- I don't thi-- can we hear?
Test one, two, three. Talk louder.
Yours is off.
Mine's on.
Yours are on.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
So is there a, uh, is this coming to... Has this been postponed or withdrawn?
This one is being held for another month.
Postponed?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-016 for the property located at northeast block 1,000 to 1024 East Washington Street, northwest block 901 through 917 East Adam Street and 900 East Washington Street, southwest block 200 South 9th Street. Petitioners Sangamon County and the Sangamon Mass Transit District. Present zoning classification is B2, General Business Service District, Section 155.034 I1, Light Industrial District, Section 155.040, and S2 Community Shopping District, Section 155.032. Requested zoning relief or reclassification to S3 Central Shopping District, Section 155.032, and a conditional permitted use of Sections 155.032 C1, accessory off-street parking not on the same zoning lot as you served in S3 and 155.183, accessory off-street parking not on the same zoning lot as used and 155.032 C2, commercial parking lots in 155.184, commercial off-street parking and a variance of Section 155.032B. Permitted uses in the S3 Central Shopping District to allow two B2 General Business Service District, Section 155.034B2 uses, one being a passenger rail station and bus depot in the S3 zoning district and a variance of Section 155.062, permitted obstructions and required yards to allow monument signs greater than 14 inches in diameter between 3 and 10 feet in height above the ground as a permitted obstruction within 20 feet of a zoning corner. Lot formed by the intersection of any two streets or curbs lines, subject to the approval of the traffic engineer and a variance of Sections 155.032B2D. Special provisions of temporary signs to allow construction and temporary parking signage to exceed 100 square feet, 155.320, permitted accessory on-premises signs to allow multiple pylon weight-finding signs to allow monument and pylon signs to be located closer than 100 feet to each other, to allow ground signs within the proposed pedestrian plaza area to be constructed without surrounding landscaping, and to allow monument signs within 10 feet of street right-ofways of less than 10 feet above grade, 155.321, non-illuminated signs to allow non-illuminated ground signs to exceed 100 square feet, and to allow non-illuminated building and wall-mounted signage to exceed 900 square feet, 155.322 illuminated signs to allow illuminated ground signs to exceed 100 square feet, to allow illuminated building and wall-mounted signage to exceed 900 square feet, and to allow such illuminated signs to be located closer than 100 feet to a residential zoning lot. Springfield Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is approval. Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation is accept the Springfield Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation. Chair will entertain a motion.
Uh, motion to approve the Sangamon County Regional Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the Springfield and Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the...
Mine's not working for some reason. Doesn't like my fingerprint.
And the zoning...
Yes, Mayor.
Zoning passes 10 voting yes, none voting no.
Mr. Mayor, uh, the microphones are still not working.
That's what I thought.
So do we expect no solution?
Sure.
They're working.
No, they're not.
We can't hear-- we couldn't hear the motion.
I couldn't hear Sean.
Okay.
Don't do that, he doesn't like that.
Next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-017 for the property located at 1808 East Jackson Street. Petitioner is Solomon Smith. There we go. Present zoning classification is I1 Light Industrial District, Section 155.040. Requested zoning relief a variance of Section 155.157, discontune, tenuance of use in the I1 Light Industrial District, Section 155.040, to allow a property that was vacant for a period of six months and lost its grandfathered use to repair and have non-conforming single-family residents. Springfield Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is approval. Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield and Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the zoning commission recommendation.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the zoning ordinance passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-018 for the property located at 3511, 3517, 3519, 3521 East Cook Street. Petitioners FR Quail Ridge LLC. Present zoning classification I1 Light Industrial District, Section 155.040. Requested zoning relief or reclassification to R4 Mobile Home and Trailer Park Residential District, Section 155.019. Springfield Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is approval. Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation is accept the Springfield Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation with the understanding for the developer to follow the new road improvement requirements. The chair will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the recommendation from the zoning.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-020 for the property located at 3,500 Conifer Drive. Petitioner is Springfield Clinic LLP. Present zoning classification is R3B, General Residence District, Section 155.018. Requested zoning relief for reclassification into Off Office District, Section 155.020, and a variance of Sections 155.310 through Sections 155.325, residential regulations and to permit an additional ground sign as adjoining lot signage per Section 155.30817. Springfield Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is approval of the requested off zoning and denial of the requested sign variances. Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation is to grant the petition as submitted. The chair will entertain a motion.
Thank you. I move that we grant the petition as submitted.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation to accept the grant as permitted and, uh, or submitted and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number, or docket is approved, 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-021 for the property located at 1025 South 7th Street. Petitioner Springfield Clinic LLP. Present zoning classification is Office District, Section 155.020. Requested zoning relief a variance of Section 155.061, basic yard requirements to allow a side yard setback, Clay Street, of eight feet instead of the 10 feet required setback per code, and a rear yard setback on South 6th Street of eight feet instead of the 15 feet required per code. Background is that the expansion to the east campus building requires the demolition of the one-story sleep lab portion of the building and adding a four-story addition. Springfield Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is approval. Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation is approve. The Springfield Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation. The chair will entertain a motion.
Uh, yes, I move to approve the regional planning and zoning commissions of approval.
Been moved and seconded to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-022 for the property located at 1114 to 1116 South 8th Street. Petitioner is Springfield Clinic LLP. Present zoning classification is R5B, General Residence and Office District, Section 155.021. Requested zoning relief, reclassification of Office District, Section 155.020, and a conditional permitted use pursuant to 155.020C1, conditional permitted uses in the Office District, accessory off-street parking lots not to, I'm sorry, not on the same zoning lot as the use and 155.183 accessory off-street parking not on the same zoning lot as you served to allow parking lot to serve the Springfield Clinic Main Campus East Building located at 1025 South 7th Street and a variance of Sections 155.183C, accessory off-street parking not on the same zoning lot as you served to allow accessory off-street parking to more than 500 feet walking distance of the allow, or nearest general purpose entrance to the facility being served, and 155.061, basic yard requirements to allow the required yard of the subject real estate along South 8th Street to be 10 feet if a greater distance is required by the zoning ordinance, and 155.113, screening to waive the screening requirements allow along the south property line. Springfield Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is approval of the requested rezoning of off and denial of the requested CPU and variances. Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation is approved. The petition as submitted. Chair will entertain a motion.
Uh, yes, I move to approve the petition as submitted.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation to approve the petition as submitted and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-023 for the property located 1101 through 1113 South 8th Street in two parcels. Petitioners Springfield Clinic LLP. Present zoning classification is parcel one, Off Office District, Section 155.020, and parcel two, R-R-5B, General Residence and Office District, Section 155.021. Requested zoning relief is a reclassification of parcel two to Office District, Section 155.020, and for parcels one and two, a conditional permitted use pursuant to 155.020C1, conditional permitted uses in the Office District. Accessory off-street parking lots not on the same zoning lot as the use served and 155.183 to allow the use of parcels one and two for an accessory off-street parking lot to serve the Springfield Clinic Main Campus East Building located at 1025 South 7th Street and a variance of Sections 155.061, basic yard requirements to allow the required front yard of the subject real estate along Skerritt Street to be six feet instead of the required 20 feet, and the minimum side yard of the subject real estate along South 8th Street to be eight feet rather than the 10 feet required by code, and 155.113, screening to waive the screening requirement along the south property line, and 155.5480I, landscape screening and lighting regulations, transitional buffer yard requirement and landscaping to reduce the required transitional buffer yard along the south line of the subject real estate from 10 feet to zero feet. Springfield Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is approval of the rezoning, parcel two to Off Off Dis Office District, but denial of the requested conditional permitted use and variances. Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation is approved. The petition as submitted with the exception that the front yard setback of Skerritt Street shall be 10 feet instead of the six feet requested and the 20 feet required by city code. Chair will entertain a motion.
Uh, move to approve the petition as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Planning and, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation of the petition as submitted. Uh, is that to include the setbacks as well or just as...
As submitted.
Including the setback requirements as recommended by the commission?
As the... No, as the petition was submitted by...
Oh, as submitted. Okay. So, uh, that would just be as submitted by the petitioner?
Correct.
Very good. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes as submitted, 10 voting yes, none voting no. And that concludes our zoning portion of the meeting. At this time, the chair will recognize Deputy Treasurer Beggar for the presentation of the financial report.
Thank you. The treasurer's report for the corporate fund for the month of April. Beginning balance is $19,734,868. We took in total receipts of $9,323,719. We had a total disbursements in the month of April totaling $10,875,432, which left the corporate fund ending balance in the month of April at 19, or, excuse me, $18,183,153. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the financial report?
To move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the May 4th, 2021 Regular City Council Meeting and approve the minutes.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of ordinances into the record of this city council meeting.
To move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this city council meeting.
Will move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
Will move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the consent agenda passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Agenda number 2020-40, or 464 and 2021-193 remain tabled or in committee. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2018-110, reconsideration of veto and ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 38 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended to decrease the minimum contract amounts for which city council approval is required. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2018-110 on final passage.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we withdraw this ordinance.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to withdraw. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is 2020-538, an ordinance authorizing execution of a development agreement between the City of Springfield, Illinois and Legacy Park Sports LLC for a sports complex for the Office of Planning and Economic Development for the, uh, the chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2020-538 on final passage.
Will move.
Second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt proposed amendment number one.
Shall move.
Second.
And if you could read the amendment.
You want to, sir?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
And it reads in Section 2 of the ordinance and also is incorporated in the developer's agreement, says developer will commence construction of the indoor portion within 18 months of opening the outdoor project, subject to approval of the plans by the city, the approval of development assistance for the indoor facility by the city council, the determination of economic feasibility, and the securing of financing. The indoor project should be completed within 24 months from the commencement of the construction, subject to delays in construction. If the developer does not commence construction within 24 months of the opening of the outdoor project, the city at its discretion may notify the developer that it is limiting its future obligations to solely the outdoor facility development assistance. Project costs do not include direct payments to the developer, development fees, profits of operation of the project, and management salaries. Is there any questions on the amendment?
Yes, on the amendment. So if the construction timeline is not met, does that terminate the hotel motel tax contributions to the project?
Excuse me, uh, if, uh, it would if the, for example, um, the, I think the intent was from the actual committee of the whole meeting where there was a discussion about the phasing and how that might work. So the effect of this amendment is to, uh, provide for a specific timeframe of which the developer would commence Phase 2 or the indoor and, uh, provide a period for them to perform the construction. However, if they do not do that within 24 months, then the city may, it doesn't say shall, but may withhold that funding related to the indoor facility. And in other words, any excess will simply could accrue back to the city. It would retain the, the responsibility for the outdoor facility, meaning that if the outdoor is up operating, however, if the outdoor facility ceases to function or operate, then that would cut off all payments.
Well, as to the outdoor facility, we say that would cut off all of our, let's say hotel motel tax contributions to the outside?
It would. The, the way that it's, uh, there's a provision in, in the development agreement that provides for a default, and one of the remedies of default, in other words, failure to, uh, operate the facility, uh, would allow the city to terminate all payments related to that.
So if in the meanwhile we've issued bonds, aren't we obligated on the bonds to provide the funding that was stated in the bonds to the bondholders?
But it would be subject, it would be subject to the developer's agreement, and we would have to insert that as a bond default.
So that would allow us to, um, step away from our obligation to the bondholders?
Remember, those are revenue bonds, not general, not, they're not general obligation bonds, they're revenue bonds. So if we include, and it's not clear that there would actually be bonds, but if there were bonds, then, uh, there are, a bond is a contract, so there'd be a provision, uh, in the bond ordinance that provides for, uh, defaults. One of the defaults would be failure to operate. If there's a failure to operate, then we would not have to make the payments. The, the, uh, tax revenue would be cut off. That op, that really provides a huge incentive on the part of the bondholders to ensure that there's proper oversight and/or management in place to conduct the operation.
It also means a strong disincentive for anyone to purchase those bonds because they...
They're not a gen, they're not a general obligation bond. That is absolutely correct.
So if a purchaser of those bonds knows that the obligation of the city to finance those bonds with our hotel motel tax can be withdrawn, then the bondholders lose their money that they gave.
Well, if they invested the money through the bonds and the operation stops, you know, in other words, it stops, it would be no different than any other, um, you know, fails to operate, then yes, that could be an event of default. And yes, that is certainly going to be a factor in anybody investing or a lender, but most, again, generally speaking, most lenders have the ability to step in and then take it over, sell it, do something in order to, uh, mitigate any losses.
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mayor, but to build upon that, in order for bonds to be marketable, obviously there has to be a, some type of backing. And what I hear you saying is clear as can be, which is so important because it's something this council brought up time and time again when discussing this project, that there will be no general obligation to the city dollars.
That is correct.
And, uh, and I assume in order, again, in order to be marketable, that some bank or some investor is going to have to, to ultimately back those payments if, if the whole thing goes kaput, so.
They, uh, it would be my, it's totally speculation, they may want some type of limited insurance, they may ask for guarantees. There's 100 different ways that they can add financing security. We, we don't, we, we don't know all the terms that they might ask for.
Right, thank you.
Alderman Henner.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, the, the whole purpose behind this is, I, I believe that, that this, what we don't want to have is just to have eight multipurpose fields and concession stand. That, that's not a wow factor, that's not a destination people are going to want to go. We got to have the indoor facility, things like that, that, you know, first of all, in the winter, I know they do play a little soccer in the winter, but not, not much, and, uh, you know, you want to keep that, you want to keep some revenue coming in. So the purpose of this is to make sure that we're just not going to throw up some ball fields in a, in a concession stand and, and we're on the hook for, for a lot of money. Um, it, it's important that that second phase goes. Now, the purpose of what I really wanted this to say was, if they stopped, they didn't go forward with the, with the indoor facility, our obligation was done at that point because we were told they were going to go, they were going to go outdoor facility and then an indoor facility. And if they're not going to do that, we were sold a bill of goods. Um, you know, now granted, we're only on the hook for, for what they bring in, but I, I think that we all, we all been shown these great diagrams of, of the indoors, you know, facilities and everything. That's, that's the wow factor of this thing. Ball field, you can go a lot of places and just see ball fields and a, and a snack bar. Uh, that, that was the purpose of this. And, and, you know, I, if, 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 what I really wanted to see was that, that the funds stop if they don't go forward with Phase 2, and they're on their own because they, they didn't come through with what they told us they were going to do and what we've told the, our constituents that they were going to do. So that was my, that was my thought process on this. Now, it's been kind of softened a little bit, and I understand that, but, um, I think that we owe it to the constituents and I think we owe it, that, you know, we, we got to make sure this thing goes through both phases.
Alderman Proctor.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a quick question, uh, is the developer aware this amendment, needs fine with it?
Yep, they'd like to come forward, someone from the development team.
And, and just for edification, this is actually, the language actually that was submitted from the developer's agreement or the, the various revisions over the last day or two. So I just picked them up and, uh, put them into the ordinance by way of information.
Correct, and, and we, uh, on behalf of the developer, Mike Horstman, I'm the attorney for the developer, uh, we are fine with this, uh, with this revision.
Thank you.
Is the gentleman from SFA here? If you'd like to come forward. Hello, if you could introduce yourself, and, uh, I'm sure we have, I have a couple questions, but others might too.
Yes, sir. Uh, well, thank you for having me. Uh, my name is Jim Arnold with Sports Facilities Companies. I'm a partner and our Director of National Business Development.
Well, thanks for coming to Springfield.
Of course.
One that's been questioned is the, uh, why you can't build it all at once, and how many projects have you been, uh, involved with and how many, uh, do the phased approach?
Yep, so, uh, I'll, I'll try to answer those in portions. So since 2003, we've worked with over 2,000 communities on sports-specific projects. Um, we currently manage 27 venues. Personally, I've been in the U-Sports tourism industry for almost 20 years, focused on projects just like this. Absolutely, if the funding were available and, and the appetite were there to do everything at once, that would be great. However, there are multiple examples around the country of facilities that are phased-in. Traditionally, as we've seen, the ones that are, you know, most successful, uh, do bring in the outdoor first and then follow up with the indoor. A great example of a project that, that we manage, Cedar Point Sports Center. A great example of a project that we manage, Cedar Point Sports Center, started with an outdoor complex, then moved into the indoor phasing. There's multiple examples, Lake Point Sports in Atlanta, started with outdoor, then moved into indoor, and numerous around. And so that would be our recommendation for the proper phasing, if this is a phased project.
Any questions? Alderman Repath?
Thank you for coming. There's some concern about the competition for local leagues and that type of thing in not just softball, but basketball and that kind of thing. Can you tell us how, how this, this facility will affect our local? We have a couple of areas that have basketball, have softball, that kind, can you tell us about that?
Absolutely. So, so our mission and our goal out of all of our facilities is to improve the health and economic vitality of the community. So there's really two parts that have to happen to make that successful. And part of it, which we've talked about and is a lot of the focus, is the economic impact, the tournaments, those things that generate those out-of-town visitors. But Monday through Friday, we want to make both the outdoor and indoor facilities a local use. So making sure that we create relationships with those leagues, with those user groups, to where we can provide programming not only for athletes, but also local residents who may or may not traditionally be involved in sports. So one of the first things we would do in this, in this market is get to know all of those user groups who are currently operating and see how the facilities could support their programs.
So you're up for, say, developers, contractors who have those type of leagues to work with you and trying to work their, their leagues into your facility?
Absolutely.
Alderman Gregory, and then Alderman Williams.
So my question was, when one of your representatives came here some time ago, before I was on the council, he may mention, I was actually looking for the actual article as I was researching this in the past, and he, he made a comment that said, he was not saying that, that this facility, and this before they came to this, was what you guys were recommending, you were just saying that what the, what the footprint of a successful venue would be. So I, so I think, you know, some of the questions that, that rolled around was the feasibility of this project. I've seen other projects like the Louisville Slugger Project in Peoria, cost $38 million, no figure, right? But this project has a indoor dome and it has, I think, about eight fields. It's a little different, the city there put in $3 million, and the developer had $20 some odd million. So, you know, my question is, is that while you guys did an excellent market analysis, is this project specific, or was the analysis that we were given a general analysis?
Yes, so the original study that was done was a market analysis and feasibility study for this specific market. So we looked at what would work here, what could be supported here by not only the local community, but also the drive time that would come to Springfield. And then over time, as this project has continued to evolve, we've continued to adapt that plan. And so the original plan that we have from that study now is, you know, not only the market changes, but also the actual youth sports tourism market changes as well. And so a lot of the stuff we've been talking about and what we've talked about here is multipurpose fields and creating experiences on site. So one of the things I also do want to make very clear is, while I do agree that you can go really to many communities around here and go to fields, what we're describing here and what our vision here is something much more than that. It's an event destination. And so these multipurpose venues and fields can be soccer, lacrosse, baseball, softball, flag football, but then within this facility, there's also experiential items. So we're looking at, you know, things like miniature golf and ropes courses, and, you know, it's not just the standard concession stands anymore. We're looking at markets and food truck parks and things that, when people come to this facility, we want the facility itself to be a destination, so that when people come here, then they get to experience the city and everything the city has to offer. So we're continuing to right-size for this market with the goal being that, you know, maybe not the 200 or 300-team tournament that is kind of sounds sexy in the newspapers, but instead a 60, 70, 80, 100 teams every single weekend. And we believe this market can support that, and by creating these multipurpose fields and multipurpose venues, we can ultimately be as flexible as possible, not only right now, but also in six years and eight years and 10 years as this market continues to evolve and adapt and change based on participation.
Okay, I thank you, I appreciate it. So my last point on this topic, and, and I'm not going to speak no more on this, was is, you know, it's hard for me to support this because I really don't feel like it's, it will really be inclusive of this entire city. I really definitely know that sports tourism is big, but the sports that we're talking about, you know, they have a certain demographic, and that demographic is going to, another demographic is going to be missed. And, you know, I just really think that, that the city's direction, it has to be more inclusive. You know, we got some guys that's upset about their businesses, their private businesses, throughout this city. I proposed a solution before that I thought could help out the entire city, it was shot down, so I don't have no amendments tonight. But I just wanted to make it clear to my council that the only reason that I'm not for this is because I don't feel like it's inclusive to the whole city. But I do quite possibly believe that if, if done right, it can be successful. Sports tourism is a good thing, we definitely need to tap into it, but we, we need to make sure that these things are inclusive, or people are going to miss out. And, you know, we passed a resolution about a year ago that, that we would, you know, be more, more mindful of these decisions. So I appreciate your time, and I appreciate the council's time.
Absolutely, and if I could just comment to that, because I do think that's an incredibly important point. And as a company, you know, as an industry, I think the industry has gotten to a point where people do view it like that, for a good reason, is that these become sports and become opportunities for only kids who can afford to travel and afford these type of things. As a company, we feel very strongly that sports have to be inclusive. And that means that all of the projects we work on, we look for opportunities regardless of socioeconomic background, regardless of mental or physical capabilities, that we're creating programs that everyone within the community can not only afford to participate in, but are able to participate in. And so we have access programs, scholarship programs that we'll put into this facility and all the facilities that we operate, but I hear that loud and clear, as a company we do, and if this moves forward, we will be committed to making sure that all residents have the opportunity to engage with this facility and that we're working with businesses, hotels, restaurants throughout the community to make sure that we don't end up in a situation where people feel that they don't have access here. So I do very much appreciate that view.
Thank you. Alderman Williams?
Well, thank you, Mayor. So, you know, when I first heard about this Legacy Point, and it was told to me that it was going to benefit the entire city, you know, I, as Ward Three, had pressure from individuals and constituents who, who felt that it was their ideal, it was supposed to be over there, and I got them past that, and we moved forward with me committing that we are going to put together a community benefits agreement. Are you aware of that?
I'm not of the details of that, I know the process.
Well, I'll just touch on just a few of them then, since you haven't seen it. So one of those was for School District 186 to benefit. I, as an Alderman from Ward Three, far away from where this was going to be, was trying to figure out a way that the entire city does benefit. And one of the ways was for the facilities and the structures to be located on the side of 186 School District lines, and that's in the community benefits agreement. And I was fine with that until I saw a softening of the language that said, I think it says, "if practical in final design." Can you tell me what that means?
And, and I'll let the developer speak to this a little bit, but a lot of that was changed to, "we're practical." Our goal would be to have the school system there, to allow, to have kids play there, have their school boards come, or school sports come in, because that's beneficial. That's time during, especially during the week, where traditionally these complexes want to incorporate that local use. So as we're finishing the design, as we're putting that together, we want to make sure that we can fit all of those fields that they want on the north side of the property, as I understand it, as there's a line that intersects that property. And so we want to make sure we can get that there.
Yeah, I'm speaking of the buildings and facilities, though, for, be pretty much Phase Two. You know, I mean, I'll take the fields as well, but because I want to benefit the entire city, and all these wards have students who go to public school, pretty much in Springfield, and I want our school district to benefit from, I don't want to share, I don't want to do the other things we've done out in those areas in the past, so that's why I put that in there. And I just want to say, if you believe in what you're saying, that you wanted, why not put it in writing? Why not leave it and take out the "if practical"? I mean, we're going to put all the buildings on the side that benefit School District 186. So that's just, just one of my points, I wanted to share what you, the other, I'm an Alderman from South Grand to Stevenson on South Dirksen, I have 12 hotel motels, either a hotel or motel or some form of a place where you stay overnight, 12 of them. And all I asked, as I'm trying to, again, include everybody into this, this situation, was for, to play, to stay. You know, so, so I kind of was saying, they have to stay in a Springfield hotel. I got hit with some, some wrangling where I had to put a mile radius symbol, if they're already in Springfield and live here, you know, you can't, okay, so we use 90, that's the language in here, a 90-mile radius, it wouldn't apply to those teams. But outside at 90-mile radius, they come to Springfield, they must stay. I've been told we can't say that, or we can't do that?
So I can answer, so that's a bit more of an operational question. So your first question, you know, from the operations side, from, from our team, what I can tell you is we'd be committed to doing everything we can to get the school teams there.
In writing, though, in a community benefits agreement, where you're saying that the teams that are playing in your tournaments will stay in Springfield hotels, because then they're staying all over Springfield. When they fill out, fill up in the closer ones in Springfield, they'll come over to my 12 up and down Dirksen Parkway.
And so the reason that that language got changed to, I believe, probably similar, "when practical," is some of those decisions, as we bring certain events here and certain tournaments here, may not be up to us. So as you bring in the outside event operator, they, you know, there's certain events and certain tournaments out there that don't have a state of play and don't run through that. There's certain that'll come in and have their own pieces, and so those are operations as we bring in a rights holder, we may not necessarily be able to control, so we didn't want to put a commitment in there that we couldn't meet. What I can tell you is what you're asking for makes sense for our operations just from the actual experience we're trying to deliver. So if you look at any of our facilities around the country, people who come in from out-of-town, they want to stay close to the facility, and the closer they can be to the facility, you're absolutely right, it starts to radiate out. And we will have people who can afford all different levels of hotels and have different commitments and loyalty programs, and so we are 100% committed to working with local hotels within the community when and where we can, and when and where it's our programming that's driving that. Another piece of that is you might have certain types of programming that, you know, whether it's a showcase versus a week-long tournament versus a weekend, that just the industry itself doesn't necessarily fit into that state-of-play model. And so, again, our commitment from an experience standpoint to not only the hotels in the community, but also our guests, is to utilize the local hotels here as much as possible. And one of the first things we do when we come in as an operator for a project is we sit down with those hoteliers, and we talk to them about what they want to see, because just as important that the guests get a good experience at the hotels, the hotels need to get a good experience from the guests and from our operations. So we're committed to that. The reason that we can't fully commit in writing is simply because there will be some things throughout this process that'll be out of our control operationally.
Okay, well, you know, for the sake of time, I mean, it's a lot of, I got jobs, equal opportunity, you know, a bunch of different planning committee, I'll just hit, talk about one more, and then I'll just pass the mic. The last one is dealing with our existing facilities in Springfield, Illinois. So talking to Sean, who's a coach, and other coaches in my ward, I, you know, I had to be taught what a pool game is, and, you know, pool games, consolation games, overflow games, you know, all this. So in this, I mean, this amendment for this community benefits agreement, you know, I was insisting on those facilities be used, again, another way for the entire city to benefit. Because, you know, Robbins-Robbers and the Chamberlain Park, the gym, you know, all these different facilities throughout Springfield could get some of that business, and some of them overflow games. Again, I'm not good in the tournament of sports and things, but listening to my colleague here, I thought that that was possible, because here again, I'm a ward, Alderman, that my ward in particular, yeah, how's that benefit us? Well, I'm trying to find these different ways through hotels, through, you know, where the location for the tax base. And, you know, now I'm at existing facilities, you know, can they be utilized? Will they be utilized? And can we put that in writing, that the overflow games or whatever you want to call those type of games, when, can we have them be used?
Yep, and the answer is not, you know, not to fall back to, but the answer is a little bit similar there as well. And so when, if we do have a partnership with an, with an events right holder who brings their event to town, sometimes we may or may not have control over what they use or how they utilize other facilities. Obviously, in any of those situations, we would push them towards local, and again, to an experience standpoint, this industry has moved to a place where families are looking to play as many games onsite as possible, and then when they have to leave, they want to stay as close as possible. So it doesn't behoove the business model for many people to say, okay, well, let's drive somebody 30, 45 minutes out of town.
So I'll just end by saying, you know, I tried, I'm trying to support this, and I think it would be good for Springfield, but I'm hearing all this, it's contingent on what these other event planners or these other folks would want to do, because you, I guess, don't have the authority to want to, you know, commit or say, you know, I will commit. So when we spend in tax dollars money and I'm trying to put stuff in writing, and I think everything I've mentioned is reasonable, you know, that the average citizen would they, you know, great, that's going to benefit Springfield, but it seems like we can't get there because of maybe me not understanding, and I'll blame myself not understanding how these events that happen at these tournaments and how they're put together and how they work, maybe they have all the power and they should be here answering these questions. But I know if we're going to use taxpayer money to do this, and I also think it's very expensive, we, we have to find a way to make sure in writing, and I'll be able to assure my ward, that it's going to be inclusive for everybody. So I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor, thank you, and I thank you for, you know, answering.
And we can make a commitment to you that we will exhaust all efforts to make all of those things happen. I think where we stood was we didn't want to take a chance that we would be in breach of an agreement if we dealt with one or two events along the way that did not want to do that. And quite honestly, we could look at and say, hey, if that event doesn't support the city and doesn't want to be here, then maybe we need to look at a different event and bringing somebody else in. We just always look and want to make sure that one situation that might deal with something like that wouldn't put us in breach of an agreement. So I will stand here on behalf of our company and tell you that all of those things you asked for, we are fully committed to. And if you look at any of our properties, any of our projects around the country, and I know you've seen a lot of numbers out of our Sandusky project in Cedar Point, all of those hotel numbers that you see, the only ones we count are within Erie County, because Erie County paid for that project out of a hotel tax. So we, I 100% hear what you're saying, and I, what you're saying is right. We just need to make sure that we're committed to it and that as things progress, that if there's a situation that that doesn't happen, that we wouldn't be in a situation where we'd be in breach. So again, committed to that, we hear what you're saying, and respectfully, we agree with what you're saying, and I think we've shown that across all of our projects.
Yep, I don't know if Steve Luke or Dirk wanted to come up and speak to the brick and mortar portion, because what the Alderman's referring to is with regards to building on the School District 186 side, so property taxes are, you know, accentuating on that side of the development as opposed to the other.
Mayor, can I, can I follow up real quick before?
No, I'm not.
Actually, it's Alderman DiCenzo, Alderman Repath. Alderman Conley, then you can. But you can write down your question.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, are we going to conclude the debate regarding the amendment? And then we'll go to the general?
Sure. But if you could answer that question, then we'll go ahead and vote on the amendment.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. As a practical matter, the facilities have to overlap because of where that line cuts through. The facilities are going to overlap on both sides of that line. I believe you've seen the designs where some, where the buildings, most of the buildings are in the 186 area, but there are going to be buildings that are not in the 186 area, just because of the way that, that line runs through, and that's a line that we couldn't move. We tried to move it when we first started the project, and those are school lines that are set, and there's nothing we can do about that. And those are school lines that are set and there's nothing we can do about that. But we are committed to working with District 186 to provide our facilities and to, to work in partnership with them to allow those to be used.
Now, is it brick and mortar of the Phase Two in the Springfield School District 186 side?
I do believe that yes, it is. That the bulk of the facility, the indoor facility itself, is within District 186.
All we need is the address.
So let's make a, any discussion on the amendment, let's vote on the amendment.
Just real briefly, I understand the purpose of the amendment. I think the purpose of the amendment is good to encourage the indoor facility so that we don't stop at the outdoor facility. And I'll vote for that. But realistically, I don't think it creates much incentive for the reason that, as I understand the financing package, our tax incentives are all directed towards the outside facility. So if at some point we're told that the indoor facility might not happen, we're already committed to the outdoor facility with all the incentives. And so the hotel motel taxes in particular are committed to that. So I don't see that it's as good an incentive as we'd all like to see. That's the point I'm trying to make.
The whole point of the amendment, Alderman, was to hold their feet to the fire, basically, to make sure that they move to Phase Two, which I think they're committed to do that. We just want, the whole idea for us is the city council protects taxpayers' money, and that's what we're trying to do with this amendment.
Any other discussion on the amendment? In favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
No, say nay. Motion carries. So we'll carry on the discussion. Alderwoman DeSanto?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would like to address Alderman Williams and some comments that he made and some of, some of what is in his community benefits agreement. A lot of what you outlined is already in the project labor agreement. As far as jobs go, there is, when you are taking public money, there is a commitment you have to make to employ local first. You know, there's also an agreement with our lower, local labor organizations. So a lot of what you outlined there is already covered in the project labor agreement, which in itself took about a year to hammer out. Second, Ward Six touches more wards than any other ward up here. Okay? You drive down Stanford and you're in Harvard Park. And who do I share Harvard Park with? With you, Alderman Gregory, in Ward Two. And that's right down the street from where this is happening. So this isn't some far west side development, this is a south side, you know, it's, it's a pretty centrally located development. So I'm, I'm getting a little tired of hearing that, you know, this isn't going to benefit the whole city, because it is going to benefit the whole city. Anything good that happens and any revenue generated from this project does benefit the whole city. You know, my ward doesn't get a percentage of the cannabis tax. I don't get that. And I don't begrudge what anyone gets. You don't hear me complaining about it. I'm just pointing out the facts of this situation. And those are the facts of the situation. I'm not trying to fight with anybody, I'm just trying to point out, you know, that this, you cannot get a more central location than what we're talking about right here. So, you know, all we are doing here tonight is voting to get this to the starting line. They still have to come up with financing. There's still a lot of work on their end. If they don't hold up their end of the agreement, none of this happens. So all we're voting on tonight is to get this off the blocks. That's it. If things don't happen the way they're supposed to, that's, that's the end of it. So if we're going to pass up, you know, the mayor has touted this several times, what is the best city post pandemic? What was number one, the number one city post pandemic? What is it, Mayor?
Springfield, Illinois.
Springfield, Illinois. Lo and behold.
Thanks for teeing it up.
That's right. So here we are, coming out of the pandemic, and we've got this big shiny new facility within our reach. And we're going to say no to that? How often do we get this opportunity? I mean, I haven't seen anything this big come along in years, and certainly not in Ward Six. It's certainly not something that would benefit the whole city. So, you know, to me, it's, it's a no-brainer, because if they don't hand up, if they don't hold up their end of the bargain, then nothing happens, which is what we want. We want them to hold up their end of the bargain, we want this to move forward, we want this to be successful.
Mr. Mayor?
First, I have Aaron Conley, Chuck, oh, sorry, Alderwoman Conley, then Alderman Repath. But Director Doll had a, he had a comment to make on the hotels real quick, if you could.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll allow.
Sorry.
I'm kidding.
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate that. Jim, thank you as well. Jim Arnold, thank you as well. I just want to clarify on the, on the state of play, and that it's typically, the state of play is limited to a certain amount of hotels. We've opened it up to all the Springfield hotels. So any hotel that wants to participate in the state of play will be able to participate in the state of play. The second point is, it's, it's counterproductive to the complex and, and to the facility itself, because remember, one of the incentives is a 2% hotel tax. And so it'd be counterproductive to book outside of Springfield in Springfield hotels. So we'll absolutely be looking at booking Springfield hotels. I understand the concern with maybe another city that may be like a Chatham Building Hotels, I understand that, Alderman. Certainly that's a concern. But understand that we will be booking the Springfield hotels, because again, that's part of the incentive and part of the 2%. So we need to be sure that that's well-funded. So absolutely, Springfield hotels will be used. And then also, just to the scope itself, I think Jim Arnold's being modest here. I mean, we're using the Sandusky, the Cedar Point, Sports Force Park playbook. Jim designed the playbook. I mean, he's in, on our side. I mean, this is much, much similar to what they're doing in Sandusky. That's been highly successful. $40 million year on the outdoor economic impact, $20 million on the indoor. $60 million year, 30 million more than what the initial feasibility market analysis claimed Springfield would have on an economic, economic impact level. So we've got the guy that designed the playbook for Sandusky, we've got the facility and the land, and we've got the market to do it. Thank you.
Thanks. Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you. And I'm glad I waited for Director Doll to speak, because I will say, one of my comfort levels with this project is the fact that we aren't actually expending Springfield tax dollars. We're, our part of this deal are hotel motel taxes, by and large. And again, that disincentive for anyone, for you to promote this to any other hotel except here, because we have to get that 30 million. We, we have to reach that, otherwise the, the city of Springfield is not obligated to do anything else. And, and that gives me a certain level of comfort with, with this program. I, I have to tell you, you know, my kids grew up with the YMCA soccer, and, you know, I don't want to see something come in that's going to potentially undermine that activity, but that's also a different kind of, of game, of play. So I appreciate you talking about your, your commitment and your, your company's commitment to working with our existing organizations, working with our, our school district. Springfield High School could use fields to practice on. What we have right now for Springfield High School is not fabulous. It's better than when my kids were there, but it's not great. So I appreciate that very much. I would just like, if you could elaborate a little more, you've kind of touched on, on my question a couple of times, but there is, I'm going to have to do this, there is language in the contract that talks about disadvantaged youths. And that you have, you will have a plan, and I will admit, I hate the line, reasonably acceptable, I mean, that's terrible. But I, I, I'll live with it. But to include and provide for community inclusion, engagement, and opportunities for disadvantaged youth at the sports complex. So if you could just give us some actual examples of what you've done, not, not sort of a, a plan, but what have you done in instances like that if you've had this sort of a provision? And, and maybe just sort of a dangle something about what, what you would like to try here?
Yeah, absolutely. And again, that's a great question, I appreciate that. I always want to talk to you that. Because again, I, I know I said it, but I'll reiterate it. Being able to have everyone in this community have access to this facility is the only way this facility becomes successful long-term. And so at all of our facilities, and what we've built is we've built what we call our access program, where we look at, at communities, school groups, YMCA's, boys and girls clubs, individuals within the community who need assistance to engage with our programming. And we tie a percentage and a portion of our sponsorship agreements and our corporate deals across all of our facilities that help offset those operational costs so that we can provide free programming to kids who can't afford to be, you know, engaged or for the programs that are run at the facility. We'll also look at opportunities with the Boys and Girls Club, the YMCA's within the community, and say, hey, let's look at what open space we have at our facility. Let's look at areas where we may not be utilizing, that you can come run your programming, and we can partner with you on those events. And so we do that at a number of our facilities, we have facilities around the country. Hoover Met and Hoover, Alabama is a great example, where we have a relationship with the city, where we have a budget, we have an operating plan, and when we get to that number, every other hour within that facility is provided back to the community for free and open community use. So I think there's, you know, not only a component of bringing people in who can't necessarily afford the programming, but there's also the need for open hours and open play opportunities where the community can just come out and enjoy the complex, not necessarily having to be part of a program.
Okay, so just like, so these nice turf fields, kids could come out and just play soccer on them?
Absolutely. So we'll look for, we'll look for opportunities for that to happen, we'll look for planned times for that to happen, for open play, for community events. And in each opportunity we can get, you know, for, for us, the more people that are at the facility, the better.
Right.
And, you know, looking around, if we look around and see an empty facility, we're not doing our job correctly.
And then, and I, and I, again, it's not part of this plan, but have you, or are you planning to reach out to the Mass Transit District to, to see the bus routes or, you know, because transportation can be a barrier for some people.
Absolutely. And from, from our standpoint, if we can have those opportunities, that's fantastic. I will say, I don't know from the development what the opportunities are, that may be, that may be a developer question, but if there's-
I just put that as a bug in your ear, how's that?
Yeah, if there's, if there's the opportunity to have that, absolutely. Because that is one of the biggest problems, especially as we start looking at our access program and start looking at those opportunities, is also the transportation to get kids there. And so that's something we would look at, we would look to partner with the school district, we would look again to some of those organizations to see what those opportunities are.
Wonderful. I, I will tell you, because I've also been on the school board, and, and access to high quality sports facilities for our, our local 186 students has, I mean, it's been over 10 years since I was there. So it's, it's been a longstanding issue for our community. So I'm, and I appreciate the way that this has been structured, that it's not city obligations. Alderman McMenamin pointed out, even these bonds are not obligated, I mean, the city doesn't have an obligation to those. So thank you very much. I do have some questions later on, Mayor, but they're kind of smaller procedural and not for, not for Mr. Arnold.
Great.
Thank you for your questions.
Thank you.
Alderman Repath, then Alderman Henner, and then Alderman Proctor.
I was going to follow up, I was going to talk about the same thing Director Doll talked about, because one of the things that's, when we started this whole idea, was that Alderman Turner, who was here prior to Alderman Williams, was, we, the hotels along Dirksen Parkway are not technically in Ward One, but they are adjacent to my ward. That's an area that's been a little depressed with the shopping center out there, and we're hoping to get numbers out on Dirksen Parkway to drive that, drive that shopping center back into operation. That's a big deal for us. Stevenson Drive is another big area that intersects with Alderman Williams and Alderman Gregory and my wards. And so the hotels on the Dirksen Parkway side to where the facility is going to be is eight minutes. And it's, you hop on 72 right at Stevenson Drive and you're there in eight minutes. So we know that's going to be a prime, a prime set for the hotels that are going to be used in this thing. Obviously, the ones that are out behind Menards and that kind of stuff is going to get some use. But as Director Doll said, we got, we're going to fill a lot of hotels every weekend. Is that your experience?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and what's going to happen is, you know, one of the things that was mentioned is, we want to work with every hotel. That doesn't necessarily mean that every hotel, every single weekend is going to have to give up a bunch of inventory, or there's going to be hotels certain times of the year that say, hey, we're at capacity here, or, or we're fine. And so what, the way we look at it is, every hotel that wants to be involved, we want to have involved. And then, but we also want to make sure we're taking care of those hotels and being realistic with the inventory that's coming in every weekend, so that for, if we know 56 teams are coming in, let's not go reserve blocks at every single hotel across the market, because never fail, if you do that, you're going to end up with hotels that have held inventory for a program that then goes unused. And so what we want to do is, we want to make sure that we have the right inventory on every single weekend, and we will use a lot of inventory on every single weekend. But also, we want to make sure that each weekend, we're using a different set of hotels.
And this whole thing is an objective for us as a community, to use this type of facility to drive economic development in Springfield for, for where I'm just talking about in our areas on the east side. And it's important to us, we need, we need to have new businesses along there, putting people in hotels, they got to eat someplace and they got to go somewhere, they want to go to the movie theater, they want to go to a night's action park or anything else. We got, that's all going to be facilitated. I know Ron Metzger, who runs Motorheads, is hoping that this is going to drive the extension of MacArthur Boulevard down to Toronto Road, which will open up that whole corridor for the whole thing. So excited about it happening. I want to emphasize that it's important for us to, you know, work with our local people that have sports facilities to try to interact with them, to try to help them, because we don't want to drive businesses that are currently going on out of business. We want to, we want to enhance it, we want to try to help those folks. So please put that on your agenda and please try to work with Director Doll, with those, with those people. I appreciate it.
Yeah, we certainly will. And, you know, the one thing I will add to this is, you know, one of the projects we've used a lot as, as a great success story has been Sandusky and Cedar Point Sports Center. In three or four years, the next city council we have to sit in front of, we need Springfield to be a success story as well. And so I know we're talking about a lot of things as we are committed to this, and we are committed to this, because not only are we a partner with the city, our staff's going to live here, it's, our staff, a lot of our staff's going to come from here. And it's going to be where they live, where they raise their kids, where their kids go to high school. So being involved in the community, being tied into all that's extremely important. And at the same time, also for our company, we know we're only as good as the last project we've worked on and helped develop. And so we're trying to get better every single time. And the commitments we make, we need to make sure that the next community that picks up the phone and, and calls you or calls the mayor and says, hey, did they come through on their promises? They're going to get a resounding yes, and we're confident that as you call any of our complexes, you'll get that resounding yes.
Thank you.
Alderman Henner?
Thank you, Mayor. Oddly enough, before I came up to the council office, the, on the radio, the song Xanadu popped up. And anybody that's been around Springfield knows, there was a sports complex called Xanadu that was a big proposed complex, and it, it, they tried to get it off the ground, never happened, and, you know, it's just a little history. And I thought it was kind of interesting, because, you know, I think this is, this is a, this is an exciting time for, for Springfield. And I appreciate you coming and, and your company showing interest, because, you know, we, we're in the weeds here on, on, on all this, because we're, we're concerned, because of like Xanadu, we've, we've, we've had things come and people just, you know, tell us what we want to hear and it, it doesn't, doesn't happen, you know? So that's, that's kind of the, it's, it's kind of poetic that this, this happened. But as far as the, the, my only suggestion would be, and I don't know if this would be something that, Mayor, you, you guys could, could just, you know, figure out how to do, is that, that your, the administration building or your postal address has to be in that 186 corridor, like Kristen said, it's, it's, that's, that's important. And because it, it's not where they're playing, it's where the payments are going. That's, that's what it's all about. I mean, I, I think that that's, that's what needs to be done. And Alderman Williams, I will tell you that your document was spot on on, on the state of play. I was, I brought that up early on, and I was very concerned about that. I don't, you know, and, and I think that you guys could put it in your contract for people that want to come in and use the facility, that if they have to have a stay or play, it has to be in Springfield. That, that would be in your contract, if they want to use a facility, that's what they have to do. To me, that seems awful, that, that, it would make sense anyway to do that, because the Springfield hotels are closer. Just, just a way to get around some of that. But thank you very much for your interest in, in, I mean, I think this is, this is an exciting day for, for sports and, and, you know, and the, we got a good history of sports in the city of Springfield, and, and I thank you.
Absolutely. Well, well, thank you. And for the record, I think I'd be more concerned if these questions weren't being asked. And so the fact that you're all vested to this point and that you're paying attention and looking at these things, that's important, and, and something that's going to make this project ultimately more successful.
Alderman Proctor?
Thanks, Mayor. I just had quick questions regarding the, the hotel motel tax, because if we pass this, that's not raising the tax, we have to do that later, I think that's another vote. But in the agreement, there's a 1% that's being taken, that's enacted now, that's going to be taken from either the road fund, the infrastructure fund, or the corporate fund, or CBB. So is the, I just wanted to know if, if there's a plan on where that 1% haircut's going to come from? Is it going to come from the infrastructure fund, or is it going from the corporate fund, which I think goes then to Oak Ridge Cemetery and then some other items? Or is it going to come from the CBB?
Yeah, actually, it'll be driven by the corporate fund, because with the additional room nights, it'll more than cover that percentage. We'll see, hopefully we'll see the escalation that everybody projects, and Director Doll can speak to it, but to not only cover the cost of the project, but also more than that. And so if you want to speak to that, Director Doll?
Yeah, absolutely. So we're projecting an additional four percentage points in the increase in hotel occupancy. So for that 1%, or if you add the two, or the 2%, but the 1% from the corporate fund, that's going to replenish it by 4%. So you're actually going to make more money down the road than you would from that 1%.
All right, thank you. And what's that 1% equal?
Six hundred thousand.
Yep, six, thank you, Alderman. About $600,000.
Oh, sorry, Alderman McMenamin.
I think this is a wonderful project, and a lot of, from the point of view of a project, and a lot of effort has gone into this by many people, Scott Doll in particular, and some others that are seated here tonight. My problem from the very beginning has been the financing of it. I think it's a strategic mistake for the city to devote 25% of its hotel motel tax to this single project. And I also disagree with the notion that we're not obligating the city on this. True enough, hotel motel tax is derived from visitors, so it's not coming directly out of our local pockets, but hotel motel tax is money we can use for other purposes, for very important other city purposes. And I'd like to just add to the question that Alderman Proctor just asked, which is, and I made this chart to help myself. Currently, you know, we collect 7% of hotel motel tax, and by ordinance and by city code, that 7% is divided up this way. Two sevenths, two sevenths goes to our infrastructure fund. That was a decision made by this city council. That's for our neighborhoods, our roads and so forth, two sevenths is committed. And two sevenths goes to the corporate fund. And that, that's, for every one seventh, it's, it's $600,000. So, we got 1.2 million going to our infrastructure fund now, in a normal hotel motel year. And we've got two sevenths going to the corporate fund. Now that two sevenths, that 1.2 million going to our corporate fund, it's in turn, is already obligated. 500,000 goes to Oak Ridge Cemetery, and I believe 100,000 goes to the convention center, maybe another 100,000 goes to downtown efforts. So it's mostly already committed. And then we've got the three sevenths, Convention Bureau budgets, that's Scott Doll. So now, we're saying that, of this 7%, most of it's already committed, we're saying, we want to take some of what's already committed and give it to the sports legacy. Tell us where that, to go along with Alderman Proctor's question, tell us, are we going to take that out of Scott Doll's budget, his operational budget? That's 600,000. Are we going to take it out of our, our infrastructure fund that's for our neighborhoods? Are we going to take it out of the corporate fund, which is, you know, Alderman, Donald, in the past, I agree with you that you've said, we don't want this project to take away from our corporate fund, but this will take away from our corporate fund. And we've got a lot of other uses that we have to put this money to. So my objection from the very beginning has been, we're taking an important source of our revenue, the hotel motel tax, and we're, we're giving it to a private business. And to be honest, you know, if, if a private business gets $35 million and they can't make this work, that'll be a disappointment, that'd be a surprise. So I think if we vote this tonight, this will happen. In other words, the sports legacy will happen, although, you know, we're front-loading all the benefits towards the outdoor part of this, and not enough to the inside part. And we don't know enough about how much we're going to pay for the land, I don't think that's ever been discussed. How much are we going to, is this project going to pay the landowner? And, you know, the cost per field, I think Alderman Henner, you raised a good point. How much did it cost Sacred Heart Griffin to put in their, their turf and their field? Or how much did it cost Springfield High School when they went to a Astro-type turf? And here we're going to spend, I think it's 35 million for eight outdoor fields? It just seems like a massive cost per field. I don't understand that, it's never been properly explained to me. So, you know, I think if we pass this tonight, we're not just obligating this city council, we're obligating the next five city councils, because once you commit what will be two eights, we've got 7% now, but our mayor is recommending that we add a 1%, so it'll be 8% hotel motel tax. So that'll be 1.2 million devoted to this legacy, legacy sports complex every year for the next 23 years. And believe me, if we have to do it for 23 years, we'll do it beyond that, because there'll be a dependency there on the, on the contribution from the city. So we're obligating, in my view, the city treasury forever, it's going to be a perpetual obligation, I predict. And I'd like to see this go through, but I'd like to see a different financing. The 1.2 million per year from our hotel motel is just too much from my point of view. I think the other financing mechanisms are okay. In other words, you take the real estate tax that comes from the development, you pour that back in, that's okay. And you take the sales tax incremental from that special business district, and you pour that back into the project, that's okay. But to rob the whole city of our hotel motel tax, 25% of all our hotel motel tax to bring visitors into our city for one legacy project that's mostly active during the outdoor season, or vice versa, I forget. I mean, I've heard so many facts and situations about this, I get confused. One, one advice that they give on investments, if you don't completely understand the investment, you know, maybe you shouldn't do it. I really suspect everyone that's worked on this, but I think the contribution from the city is too great, and we really don't have the answer to this question. Are we going to rob, are we going to take it out of the hide of our infrastructure fund? Are we going to take it out of the hide of Scott Doll's budget? Do we take it out of a, we don't have much left in our corporate portion of this to, to give anyplace else, because half of the corporate two sevenths is, is already going to Oak Ridge and the convention center and to downtown. So, good luck on this. I, I hope we, we, we either hold this or don't vote for it, because I think we're doing a disservice to our city. Our city, our strength is our traditional tourism, the state fair, conventions, and we're kind of going into a whole new area. Sandusky isn't the state capital. Sandusky is not the land of Lincoln. Sandusky doesn't have all the historical sites we've got around here, so they need to do something like this. But Springfield, we've got so many assets here, and we're kind of going in a whole new direction. It's a beautiful direction for some, but it's a direction that we could use some of this money for our existing strengths. So I didn't speak at all last week, okay? So I kind of took a little extra time tonight, because I didn't, I never spoke last week, and then the question was called, so I didn't get to say anything. So I kind of packed it in all in tonight, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I know I'll have Director Doll come up after I ask Jim Arnold to clarify something for us, but the, the intent is, as was expressed, you're going to have a lot of outside individuals coming to Springfield that otherwise wouldn't be here, so that's going to drive up, that 600,000 per 1%, hopefully escalates from there. And it's just from the added room nights. But for yourself, if you could explain the, the phase one and the cost associated with that? Because that's something we've heard time and time again. And again, the large percentage of it is, the, what we didn't account for was the interest, was the large portion, of course, property, but if you could speak to the comparison of the $30 million versus a football field or what have you?
Absolutely. And so if, if you don't mind, I would, I would like to, while I can't answer some of the questions that came from that, you know, one of the things that, you know, we do like to stress, and I think is important to look at, especially when looking at committing a, a, a large percentage of funds to a project, is in 2008, the recession, U-Sports remained untouched and came out stronger than ever. Unfortunately, we all know we've gone through a pandemic in the past year, and as conventions and as different businesses have struggled, and as tourism has slowed in many places to a halt, U-Sports again has come out of this pandemic and gone through this pandemic relatively unscathed. Where facilities are open and when they can open safely, those facilities have been filled to the capacity that's allowed. And so I, I can say confidently, we believe there's not many projects of this scale right now that are safer than a U-Sports complex. And not only from your residence use and your local opportunity or quality of life, but also from an economic impact and a return on your investment through, through those hotel rooms and those stays. And so I think that's really important to look at as part of this. To touch on the cost comment, and I'm not sure if the football, was it a football field that was mentioned earlier at the high school?
Football and baseball field.
So a football field is around 85,000 square feet, high school baseball field, somewhere between about 90 and 100,000 square feet. The fields that we're talking about here with multipurpose are in that 140 to 150, 160,000 square feet. So each of those eight fields can turn into three fields, depending on what sports you're playing and what the use is. And so that's, that's where, you know, a lot of times, I don't want anybody to get hung up on, hey, we're only getting eight fields, because the inventory that you can get off of those fields is dynamic. And we'll fill more hotels than the city currently has space for if we fill those facilities with a full, a full softball or full baseball tournament. So that's going into, as one, we're double the size on each of those fields roughly than what you might see on a high school. The other piece of this is when you go into renovating a high school field, my guess would be, and I'm sorry for assuming that it was a grass field and got turned into a turf field. And so what happens there is you're going in and basically doing a renovation. All your utilities are to site, you're, you're digging out your pit, you're filling with rock, and you're connecting to things that are already there. And so when we start looking at a per-field price, the one thing we always tell people is field number one is incredibly expensive. Every field after that starts to fall into your price per square foot range. And then on top of these fields, what we're also looking at is, again, we don't want to just be fields, we want to be a destination. And so we're building these added benefits, and we're building the, you know, whether it's the food truck park, or whether it's these amenities that people come in, this is also a large site. So we've got hardscape, we've got landscape that goes in, all those things tie into that experience for why people will come to Springfield rather than going to St. Louis, or rather than going to any number of communities that are simply popping up a fourplex or an eightplex of fields. So there's building infrastructure here, there's other infrastructure under the ground, and then there's the cost to get up and going, and all those added elements that are turning it into that destination. I don't know if that answers the, so Sandusky, a great, you know, an example, because we've used that a lot. In 2016, I believe it was about a 26 and a half, 27 million dollar project. And so obviously with the cost of construction, interest, everything that goes to current day, that puts us right around that 35, 36 million dollars for that style of facility and size of facility.
Then I do have a question for Scott Doll, if he can come up here. This will really put him on the spot, so I'm forewarning him.
Yeah.
Yep, come on up, Director Doll.
Could I add, could I add one thing? Because it's, this is another item that came up, and Sandusky's not a state capital by, by any means. One of the things, I think a lot of people look at Sandusky and say, oh, you know, it's, it's because of the, it's because of Cedar Point, it's because of the amusement park. One of the most telling things throughout the study and throughout our research in Sandusky is we looked at the top 10 reasons people were coming to that market. Sports was not one of them. And so we said, hey, this is an entirely new demographic that we can bring to a market that may not come here if not for this. You know, we had teams driving from eight, 10, 12, 14 hours away, that yes, there's a great amusement park there, but they've never been to the market before. And so they see what the market has to offer, and they say, hey, we're going to come back here on a weekend where we don't have to play three games in two days, and we can actually spend time as a family. And so all the things you're talking about that Springfield has to offer, let's get people here to show them that. And so they look at that and say, hey, you know what, I'd like to bring my family back to spend some time seeing, seeing the birthplace of Lincoln, seeing all the things the city has to offer. And so I think this project offers an opportunity to hit a market and a demographic that currently the city isn't capturing as, as a main reason people come in, and let's show off what you have here. And let's bring people back, and so people go to their next tournament and tell somebody from Tennessee or Kentucky, hey, you know what, we went to Springfield last weekend, it was pretty awesome, because we did this, we went to the water park, we went downtown, this historical stuff. And I think that's a big thing of what makes these type of facilities successful long-term for a community.
Yep. Director Doll, if you come up, and then Alderman Proctor, then Alderman Repath. But I think Alderman McMenamin brought up some good points, and he pointed out the 7%, 3% comes to CBB, Convention Business Bureau. So if the outdoor facility's up and running, right, you get 1.8 million normally, would you be comfortable in stating that, that 1% can come out of CBB?
I think I said a quarter of a percent a couple weeks ago, didn't I?
I was just saying, do you-
Dr. McCarty, we were, we were talking about, you know, when that comes in and how the BOA Center is paid and what have you. But, you know, I think there's an avenue there, but absolutely, you know, we would, once it gets up and running, I'd be, I would have no problem with that, because I know we are going to get paid back four times over down the road. We'll make more money, more money come back to our budget down the road.
Nice.
Yep, I'll allow it, since you're the home rule, home, home older woman.
Thank you. Director Doll, do you support this project?
Absolutely.
Okay, why do you support this project?
Because we are stuck. And I was going to answer Alderman McMenamin's question. We're stuck, yes, we are. And, and this is the reason why. When I arrived two and a half years ago-
With the project.
I looked at 20 years' worth of city hotel occupancy. We had never reached 60%. And I came to the mayor and I said, Mayor, we want to get the city to 60%. I gave you all the lapel pins, we have a push to get the city to 60%. I set a goal for the Visit Springfield team, but when you look back at 20 years, we can't breach 60% hotel occupancy in the capital city with everything that we have, Abraham Lincoln, Route 66, meetings, conventions, we can't breach 60%? That's ridiculous, and that's unacceptable. I made a challenge to the team, I said, we're going to get to 60%. I thought in 2020 we were going to get there, for sure, if close, but that, that happened. My point is, and Alderman, is this, we're stuck at 55% at this time. The last 15, from 2015 to 2019, we did 55% occupancy. Yes, the team's been working hard, I think we can get up to 58, 59, maybe breach that 60, but that's about it. Even with the best team in the nation, I don't think I can get much higher than 60%. This gives us an avenue, not only to go past 60%, but get the city to 70%. This creates, as Jim said, a brand new market for us. And you talk about the pandemic, we didn't have any markets in the pandemic. We lost leisure, we lost international, we lost group tours, we lost meetings, conventions. We didn't, we didn't even exist in the pandemic. This will get us through a pandemic time, but this will also push us to the next level. It creates a brand new market, 30 million a year, $600 million over 20 years. I think the city has a chance to, to go to 70% occupancy with everything we're doing to the Bureau and adding a new market.
I didn't get a lapel pin.
I was going to say, do I get a new lapel pin?
Alderman Proctor?
I'd like a 71.
Yes, yes, you can definitely have a pin. I hope we change this pin soon.
Let's make it 71.
Proctor?
I didn't mean to be Alderman McMenamin's warm-up act on the percentage. So, I'm sorry. And then, so my question is, like, I, you answered my question perfectly, because when, when we're dealing with these one-sevenths and stuff, because we, we put that in city code, you know, we'll probably have to tweak that, because like we said, 1% is 600,000, maybe in five years it'll be a million. And so we're going to have to tweak that, and we will. But when you said that it's going to increase by 4%, and so we're going to be quadrupling our money, but we realize that's going to be a couple years down the road.
Sure.
So the question here, though, because we still have one more vote to take after this when we, when we do this, we got to vote on a increase of the hotel tax, and then we got to vote on the distribution of that other 1%. So my one question was, are we certain, do we have a plan of where that's going to come from? And I see, I think I got my answer, that's going to come from the corporate side, is And I see, I think I got my answer that's going to come from the corporate side, is what I got my answer. And I'm fine with that because I think it's going to pay dividends later on. So I didn't want anybody to think I'm against this project because I'm a hundred percent for it. I just had a question about where that one percent is going to come from, and I got it answered, so thank you.
Alderman Repath?
Thanks for warming up for me. So I think it's important that we close the, I'd like to ask that we close the debate on the council, because we have several speakers that want to speak on this, and then we could do a final question and answer for the Alderman. But let's get our speakers up here to let them speak. Mayor, if you don't mind, we can do that, please.
I think we have, go ahead.
We have Al Clooney on the line. Al, are you ready? No, he's on there. Al, you're on mute. Can you unmute yourself, please? We can text him, Mayor, if you want to go to the next person.
Yes, Steve Clooney here. Steve Clooney? No, if you'd state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Steve Clooney, address 1212 South Grand Avenue, Springfield, Illinois, six-two-seven-zero-four. That's just like him. Every time I start.
All right, hold on now, we'll put you.
The older brother syndrome just kicked in.
Okay, Mayor, or?
Al first.
Al, would you like to go first?
No.
No, if Steve and Bruce can go, and then I'll go.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there you go.
Yeah, thank you.
So for those that don't know me, I'm Steve Clooney, and I'm one of the owners of the gym of Springfield. And I know a lot of familiar faces here that have played at the gym, coached at the gym, so you guys know me a little bit. For those that don't, we own a two-court basketball facility across from the airport. We've been there now for twenty years. And one thing I just wanted to say, and, you know, Steve Luker even came up with this project, so we've known about this for quite a while.
Al, first? Al, would you like to go first? No, if Steve?
I think, Al, you and Alderman Repath are on the line.
I told you he's going to keep doing it.
Say that again?
Steve's speaking right now, but you're not on mute, so we can hear your conversation.
Okay, I'll put it on mute.
Thank you.
Well, you guys are very accommodating, let me tell you. So anyway, we built our facility in 2000, so we've been there twenty-one years. And, you know what, it was always our intent that we wanted to run tournaments, we thought we could draw from Chicago, Indianapolis, St. Louis, Quincy area, because we're right in the middle. We thought that, and we had to pivot because people weren't willing to drive their sixty, ninety minutes away. And I know we're not a destination place. I understand that, okay? But in talking to almost each Alderman, there's two that did not call us back, but everybody else we talked to. And several made the comment that, you know, this is going to be a tournament place, it's not going to affect your business, okay? Well, I got to argue the opposite because I'm living it. You know, when this pandemic hit, in the state we're in, we could not operate at the gym. So what do I do? We contracted with TBK in Bettendorf, Iowa. TBK is a sports complex, I'm sure you guys back there are aware of it, okay? We're their provider. So we are, we have run over twelve events at TBK in Bettendorf. It's United Hoops Network. You can go to our website, you can look at it. I wish I was a great speaker and all, you know, rare and then tell you guys how great and how bad and all this stuff, but I'm not. I can just tell you what I've lived. I've been up there, I don't like to go up there, I'm going up there in a couple of weeks. Why? Because I'm a provider of theirs, okay? I don't have to offer a state of play. We have not gotten one team in twelve events from Chicago, from St. Louis, from Indianapolis. We generally are getting local teams that are anywhere from, I'd say, hour to two away, okay? And they generally drive there and back. So with that being said, they're very happy with us. We're running sixty-team tournaments, eighty, and I think the gentleman back there mentioned that's a nice thing. Yes, it is. They're so happy with us that they've asked my partner to move up there to develop local leagues. They want to run camps, okay? And, you know, it's one of those things, they're not doing great, so what do you do? Well, you got to make money, okay? And that's what they're doing. So my partner is probably going to move up there, and that's going to hurt the community. And they have four hundred and seventy-five thousand people in the Quad Cities. I think, or we're around, what, one hundred and fifty compared to everybody? So, you know, when you say it's not going to, and I hear all the good things, we're going to try to work with people, okay? Does that mean they're going to come to me when they want to run their leagues? Because it's going to happen, okay? Will they come to me? Or will they go to Sean Gregory because he knows basketball? Hey, how about if you do something here, Sean, for me? And then all of a sudden, a sixty-six million dollar facility is undercutting me at the gym, and I will not survive, okay? They are going to do what they have to do to make it in business. I understand that. I absolutely do. But I like a level playing field. Never came to you guys when we built and asked for money. Never asked for anything. Actually, when Al and I and my brother Greg signed that contract, they wanted, they wanted all of our assets, they wanted our house on the line, and we put it on the line. So if that place went under, I lost everything. That's just the way it is in business. That's not a level playing field, okay, what you guys are doing, okay? And I would love, if this thing goes up, I'd love to talk to them. But I also know that it's in the tough times that this stuff happens. They make decisions you have to do. I see the businessmen here, you know, I know several of you, okay? When the tough times come, you have to make it. And that's what, if the tough times come, they're going to have to make decisions, and the decisions are going to be financially in their benefit. It's not going to be one of those where they're going to say, oh, you know, Steve and Al Clooney put one point three, their money, million dollars of their money in there twenty years ago, let's take care of them. No, they're not going to do that. And I don't expect them to. But I just like the level playing field. So I'm going to end this by just saying, I sent an email on March 24th to Mr. Doll, and I didn't get a response, but I'm just going to go ahead and read it, okay? And it read this way. In fact, there's only one person in here that did respond to it, and thank you for doing that. Says, Scott, can you or SFA provide us with one facility such as this throughout the country that after two to three years of opening is not running local leagues during the week and renting their facilities out, which of course destroys the local businesses that have invested their own money? Historically, these places open up saying they will never compete with local businesses. Then when money gets tight, they do what any business does to make ends meet. Okay? I didn't get, you know, I got a little bit of an answer by the gentleman here when he said, we will try to do our best to work with these folks. Well, you know, sometimes your best isn't good enough. So anyway, I'll end that. I thank you guys for your time and consideration on this, so.
Alderman, the sense of.
I just have a question. Is your facility in the city limits of Springfield?
No, it is not.
Okay.
No.
So you couldn't come to us?
I'm a, that's right. I'm a lifelong resident in Springfield.
Okay, thank you.
He's a Twenty-second Street boy.
Yes, I am.
I know about that area.
Any other questions or comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Bruce? Or Al? Is it Al Clooney? Well, he's the one that didn't choose to go first. Okay. Probably wanted them to go first. Okay, got it.
Thank you. My name, for those who don't know me, my name's Bruce Wyboy, I own the H Street Gymnasium, which is the old Ursuline facility that's been renovated and done. My approach to this today is, I'm going to kind of go off of what Steve said a little bit, too. I've been doing this for years. When AAU basketball was sixteen teams, I was the first guy to bring AU basketball throughout the statewide in Indiana, which is now what it is today. I brought teams to Southern Indiana, blew it up to eighty teams, and it's grown and went wild from there. So I've been doing this kind of stuff, and since I moved the volleyball for years, years of doing this. I've never been to one of these facilities that doesn't get into leagues when they're not hurting. And that's kind of where I'm with Steve. I agree with what he said, we're not the destination facility they set, you know? I've got one court that we break into, two volleyball courts that we practice, three, four hundred girls in a week, that we, and we really run leagues on the weekend to supplement that. We have a softball field out there. We have plans to expand because we're growing and we need the room and we need the gym space. I've taken a dilapidated area that was falling apart, that nobody wanted to put anything into and put skin out of my money into it to build it up to what it is. And to take, I'm going to go what Steve said, I am in the city. And I didn't ask for any help for that, I did it with my money and my cash. It's all, my whole life is in that place. And to like, nobody ever even talked or approached to us, even though I have one of the largest Midwest volleyball clubs there is that's going along right now. And we're very successful, we're traveled, we're national runner-ups in club volleyball when there wasn't anything like that going. And we have competition in the town here, and I'm all for competition, and I'm all for anybody who's putting their money into it. But I'm like Steve said, I need a fair playing field. I can't compete with somebody when he's getting money and I'm not. And if I'm have to, if, you know, my question to them was, everybody's got Plan A, what happens when there's Plan B? What are you going to do when Plan A doesn't work? I was in Chicago for the last couple of weeks with club tournaments, major club tournaments, on an eight-court facility, and they filled the facility. They filled it with twenty-two teams of their own and thirty teams of their own and two other outside-sourced teams. I passed maybe forty baseball fields, softball fields empty. Two weeks before that, I was in, at the new one at the Dome in Peoria. And I agree what you say, I keep hearing this, and I brought this up, and somebody said, well, maybe that's not the thing to say, the shiny new nickel kind of thing. It is a shiny thing, it is something you can put out there and beacon. In two or three years, it's faded. It's just another facility on the pipeline of all the other new ones coming down the bike. And so to say that that will draw sixty to eighty, I don't see it. I'm in the sports field every day, I don't see that. I'm going to tournaments now where the numbers are down at all those tournaments, so you can make that a COVID argument if you want, but we're open, they were pretty full, opened up in Peoria, and that whole new baseball softball complex, the whole weekend I was there, had one field going with a game every hour or so. One field! And that indoor facility with the dome had ten percent of it on the corner. That was it, and the rest of it was closed, and they kicked out the prior to where they had before because he couldn't bring more than one or two or three teams in at a time. And I'm from Indiana, too, and they built one of these great monstrosities at Westfield, Indiana, and if you read the ESPN article lately, it's losing twenty million a month. And what would it be without the help of the Pacers, the Colts, that have both put facilities on it to make it work? Now, they know it's a tough time period for that. The biggest facility, sports facility in the country, Minnesota, was shut down for three months. Nobody can tell me this thing's going to be perfect all the time. And when it's not perfect, I agree with what Steve said, they're going to be like me, and I agree as a business, too, you're going to do what you can to make money, you're going to do what you can to survive. I approached the first time coming into this, was it going to be in a partnership with Shawn Marion of the Dallas Mavericks? And Kevin Garnett was going to probably be on the outside of that. And we were going to talk about doing one of these things, and we were shut down totally by his financial advisor. His financial advisor, even though we're all excited little kids, loved the shiny new nickel, too, wanted it, he came up and told us that this historically has been a failing, a failing situation. I don't think that what it is, it's fair to say that it's a boom, and it's going to be a boom all the time, is correct. You know, I've been around these places, I'm seeing them, I passed three big facilities coming home from Chicago, and there wasn't a thing on them in the entire weekend, nothing sitting there. The first year when I went to the Dome to play with one of my teams to play at the Dome, you couldn't find a place to park up there. People talked about the parking's horrible, this is a great facility, it's everything. I parked three feet from the door at the last tournament. And if I'd have parked at the farthest car away, I wouldn't have been eight spots. In two or three years, will this thing be booming, that money that you're saying? And I'm going to go along and go back to what I said then, too. If I, we've worked hard to build this stuff. If somebody partnered with me, what am I going to get out of that? They're going to lease to me and rent my space to come use their space? I mean, I don't see, when they're saying, we're going to partner with you guys and help you, how that is. Are you going to let me run the tournaments? Because they didn't ask me that before. And they didn't talk to us. So I'm, I agree and I see, and I'm not against sports tourism, because that's the business I'm in, too. But if it is sports tourism, money's going to go to them, what is my business getting for the sports tourism and the teams we try to bring? And I'll finish with what Steve said. I historically have been to all these tournaments, and I don't see people, we tried the same thing. We tried to do it at the convention center, people tried to do it with the convention center. Nobody but local teams came. Chicago and St. Louis historically won't reciprocate to us in Indianapolis because they don't have to. They have six, seven of these facilities within an hour, and they don't have to pay the hotels when they can get their tournaments like that. The tournaments that they may bring with this will be the big national tournaments that you're trying to do, there's only so many of those that go around, and those can be three days. And I tell you, from our experience traveling, and our kids travel all over the country, our parents historically don't like to stay too much. And a lot of these tournaments are ran, you've got the afternoon pool, so we don't have to come in until later, and then you're going to, if you get into championships, like all real good, successful clubs like we are, they're in the eight AM pool and they're gone. They stay one night and they're in and they're out. It's not a two, three-day hotel boom. And on the state-to-play thing, I get what they're implying, too, but also those state-to-plays are highly unpopular, highly unpopular on the club level circuit. A lot of teams do not like it, they think it's extortion, and they're moving away from those tournaments that are requiring that. And so I think these are a lot of things that, that's what I'd said, has anybody looked into this beyond what is shiny, nice, and new? That would be my points to say that. Because we're in the business, we do the business every day. And I don't disagree with some of their facilities, probably working well, too, but those facilities are around destination points, okay? If we were a huge destination point, it centers around a few things we've said, the State Fair, that's two weeks. It centers around the tourism and for our history and stuff like that. These other people go into, there's other things that draw them into, you know, the Pigeon Ford, places like that, that's where people go to vacation, okay? So that's what they may stay an extra day. We're going to Florida with nine national teams this week, and people didn't want to stay one day extra, and we're going to be in Florida. So I think that there's a lot to look beyond what this is just going to say it's going to be boom like that, and the city's going to make a fortune off of it. I don't see that. I don't see that, because I'm in this every day. And we make it because we budget tightly, and we do what we can when we find it open to do it. If they come in and do a place like this, our growth, I don't know if there's reason for us to grow. And I'm in Ward Five, and I don't know that a lot of the thing is going good over there, Ender. I don't know if we're really, like, I'm one guy tried to build something up that had, quite honestly, people doing drugs in the dugouts before I took that place over.
I know, you did good stuff there, we appreciate it.
And we've really tried to make that area nice and fix, and I don't personally want to come into a place where I put everything in, and we've invested hard in Springfield. You know, when you said one-eight-six, I agree with that, too. During the pandemic, I offered one-eight-six to let practice for my high school teams, because we come in there and use my facility for nothing. I was told, there was a couple of guys that, yeah, that's great, and we got started that way, and then they were like, mm, we want to keep it on a one-eight-six thing for various reasons. So, I mean, there's a lot of things and a lot of moving parts, okay? And I understand what they're saying, too, about like, they can't tell you on certain things, because quite honestly, you know, there are people running these tournaments, and a lot of moving parts. Okay? And I understand what they're saying too about like, they can't tell you on certain things. Because quite honestly, you know, there's, there are people running these tournaments. They're gonna run them the way they want them, and they're gonna make the money the way they want. They're not gonna give you what you want. Because we see that every day. We were one of the first to go to the biggest tournament in St. Louis down there, and we were told you were fine. And that you didn't have to do this or that. We were told that if we ever wanted to come back again to it, all of our kids would buy hotel rooms and pay. Half of my people live, and they put us at the airport, which is thirty minutes away from the convention center. Heck, I lived fifty minutes. Why would I pay two hundred dollars for a hotel room when I can drive twenty more minutes? I don't see these things as the super boom that they say it will be on that. Okay? That's my caution to it. That's my caution. I might have been a little more understanding on some of it too, if somebody ever approached me. But I just feel like somebody came in the back door and said, hey, you're gone. And I put a lot of work into this and a lot of my money, a lot of my money. That was what I would end up with. I don't see how you hurt by taking away good tax-paying business partners that have asked for nothing and giving money to other people and losing us. Are you still gaining something in the city there? I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clooney?
Al?
Yeah.
All right, okay, you're on.
Okay. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Kristin Desensio. We did not agree on this topic, but she has been very communicative with me and very transparent. And Kristin, I want you to know publicly, I appreciate that. I don't like where you're falling on this. I understand it, but you have been communicative, been transparent. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
I basically want to talk about three things. One is due diligence. Two is local players. Three are players that come from out of town, distance players. First of all, on the due diligence. Can you tell me if any, you know, I've asked some of the aldermen this. Have you aldermen, the mayor, or anybody on staff with the city, have they done anything in talking to other facilities that are within, let's say, an hour and a half of Springfield? For instance, the Bellville, Jacksonville, Barton Park in Chatham, Rantoul, East Peoria, Peoria, Edwardsville, and I'm probably missing some others. Has anyone done any speaking with those facilities to see how they're doing, how long they've been around, what changes they've had to make, where they're going in the future? Has any of that been done on due diligence? I doubt it. If it has, just, if you have, just raise your hand real quick, and I'll be able to see it on the, on the screen here. The other thing is, excuse me, I have a health issue, so I'm not speaking as well as I should. And I may have a cough, the issue coming up. Hang with me. The Prairie State games, you know, doing due diligence there. Everybody wanted to jump on board and get Prairie State games, willing to put a hundred thousand dollars up, if I remember right. What happened to that? We didn't get it. Two, three years later anyway, they're out of business. Why? Somebody didn't do their due diligence. The, what we need, what I think needs to be done is somebody from the mayor's office, do the due diligence. Go talk to them. Look at the financials. See if they're making it. Just because they are big and beautiful, doesn't mean it's going to make it. I used to go to restaurants, younger days, all the time. Well, what restaurants, restaurants did I go to? Well, the ones that I saw were successful. They were busy. You get good service, good food. And I thought, and I'm going back thirty-five, forty years ago, I said, man, this is an easy way to make money. They're lined up here. So, I started a restaurant, didn't know what I was doing, and boom. I'm out and I've lost, I lost a lot of money because I didn't do my due diligence. You know, what other facilities are out there and what are they doing? How would, would their facilities impact ours? And can we get the players? That's what it comes down to. So, when you do the due diligence, it has to be looking at the numbers, talking with the people. And part of that due diligence is trying to figure out how many people are actually going to come and play at your facility. Springfield's unique. I'm gonna tag on to what Steve said. Or a fact, because we started ours with a model that we're gonna run tournaments on the weekend and, and leagues during the week. Because it's easy to get the Chicago teams, St. Louis teams, et cetera, et cetera. Above I-80 do not, they don't want to come and play. There are too many opportunities up, up north. Why travel three and a half, four hours when they can play up there? We, we tried to do an AAU tournament. We had to cancel that. You know, when you take a look at other facilities, like Edwardsville, for instance, they have a real nice facility down there. Let me, if you go on their website right now, you'll see some tournaments. Let's take a look at one that just, they were just playing, and they have, I, I'm sorry, it's coming up, five twenty-one to five twenty-three. As of today, they have two teams, nine and under. One team signed up, ten and under. Two teams, eleven and under. And eight teams, twelve and under. What do you do if you can't fill the turn, fill your tournaments? Springfield is unique that you think they want to come and play here, and they don't. They don't want to travel from above I-80. It's just a fact. So, now you're looking at how many players are out there that you could do. It's your facility. Well, that's limited. When you take a look at the Springfield area and draw a circle around twenty miles, what do you have? You have Chatham, Easton, Jacksonville, Rochester. Do you know all these small towns have their own leagues? We get the so-called traveling teams that are the best in the groups that will come and play at our place. They have their own leagues. We can't get to those. They're already taken. So, we're limited in the number of players that apply on a local basis. Our model changed, had to change greatly from when we first opened, and we had to do it immediately the second year, and go to all leagues and do tournaments just in the, in the winter. Because the teams did not want to come and play. Period. Now, we did pretty well in the beginning. Now, it's a different ballgame too. As of three years ago, the girls' fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade leagues, they were our highest number of teams, and we did really well with them. We were like seventy teams, give or take a few. We did really nice on that, on the weekends we ran that. It's down now to about fifteen teams, from seventy to fifteen. And you just don't have to look at us. Take a look at the high school girls' teams. You used to have twenty kids playing freshmen, fifteen playing JV, and twelve to fifteen playing varsity. What you have now, most schools, not, I don't know about most, a lot of the girls are canceling their freshman teams. They don't have the kids to play. They have maybe twelve on a JV team that are made up of freshmen and sophomores. And if you, if you go to the games, you'll see a lot of times, only ten players on diversity team. The girls aren't playing. So, your number of players are diminishing quite a bit. So, you have other facilities, for instance, Salvation Army. Salvation Army hired a full-time operate, or basketball manager to run leagues and build their program up. And they don't fill it. They don't, and, and there, you play free because of helping the community and their, their mission statement. They can't fill it up. So, what makes everybody think that, and I only can speak for basketball, what makes everybody think that it's going to happen here in Springfield? Number one, I don't think you're gonna bring the, the people from out of town like, like you think you're going to bring. Number two, the number of local players are limited. Where are they going to come from? Where are they going to come from? You either come from one of two places. You develop new players, or you take existing players. And I'm telling you that very few new players are developed. If they aren't playing by second grade, very few new players start after second grade. That's just a fact. So, when this gentleman says he's going to have it for the community use on Monday through Friday, yeah, he will. And what it will do, when you have a limited number of players, you dilute everything else that's out there. And we're basically done at that point. And I've heard from a few of the aldermen and women say that we're not either going to be affected, or they don't think it's, it will put us out of business. Well, I have a, even I have a real, we think it's a really nice facility. We'd love to have you invest a little bit with us right now. So, when we get put out of business, that you can take the hit as well as us. And I don't mean to be facetious, but this is a lot. This is our life. We open it up because we love basketball. This is Steve's full-time job. And, and we have a lot of money. I'm over, like Steve said, one point two five is what we have into that project. Right now, it's, the property is valued at less than six hundred thousand dollars. You know, we learned a lesson when we built the place, that you pay your taxes based upon what you put in it. And then after a few years, when your taxes start to go up, you go out and get an appraisal. And they don't appraise for property taxes. They don't appraise the business. They appraise the property. So, we can't go sell that to anybody legitimately for, over what it's appraised for, which is under six hundred thousand dollars. But we're gonna take the hit right there if we have to sell it. So...
And you had two more points, you said?
You guys know, to be very clear, if you vote for this, and, and you do, you just know that it's, it's going to put us in a position where I highly doubt we survive. I do want to go on record with that. Last thing I wanted to cover is the hotel rooms. You know, when you take a look at projections out there, I did a few projections too. And I did softball, baseball, and basketball, volleyball. What I use is basically twenty-five tournaments for the year in softball, baseball, because it's outdoors, you're limited. Basketball, twenty-five tournaments too. I think that's legitimate. I don't know if the gentleman up there with SFA would dispute these numbers, but that's what I use. If he can dispute them, I would love to hear from him. Because I think that's part of the due diligence that somebody on the mayor's staff should do, to actually see how many teams you're going to get. But I use eighty teams per tournament for baseball, softball. I use fifteen players. Basketball, volleyball, I use eight players per team. And again, twenty-five tournaments. And when you multiply that out, you're looking at, for baseball, softball, thirty thousand, I'm sorry, let me back up. Twenty-five percent of the total players, I figure, would come from over sixty miles away and stay all night. I think that might be generous, but I use twenty-five percent. I don't think you're gonna get much more than that if you get that. Well, when you look at those numbers, you're looking at overnight stays. If they stay one night because they have, if, if you can stay just one night instead of two, as Bruce says, that's what you're going to do. So, if you go one night stay, a Saturday night, for baseball, softball, at a twenty-five percent level, you're at seventy-five hundred nights, hotel rooms that you're going to have out there. For basketball, volleyball, four thousand. That gives you a total of eleven thousand five hundred at one night per tournament. If you double that, which I highly doubt, that's twenty-three, twenty-three thousand. And the projection I saw in that presentation was sixty-five thousand dollars. Now, I don't know if they're right. I don't know if I'm right. But somebody should do the due diligence before I think you commit thirty million dollars to a project like this. If you're only going to get, let's say, let's just split the difference, about fifteen thousand hotel rooms. You're going to commit thirty million for an annual price, or annual number of rooms, fifteen thousand. Can you dispute that? Again, if you did your due diligence, you'd have those numbers. It's not just from a presentation, but somebody would be able to back that up.
Al, the mayor's asking you to wrap it up, please.
Yeah. And recap. It's the due diligence. Two is the number of players that are playing locally. And three are the players that are going to come and stay all night. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Is there any questions with the caller? Well, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, Point of Parliament.
Paul McDonald.
I would just encourage the chair to follow Council Rule of Procedure eight point two that limits the time for the speakers to five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. I would ask Jim Rohner to come up and speak to the room night aspect, the innovative, the, what I've looked into, and if Scott Doll had looked into others, I've looked into the Sandusky one, and Cedar Point, which is a similar type facility. And talked to the mayor in Sandusky, and is quite pleased. Of course, this was right before the pandemic when they opened. But that time, they were experiencing, well, probably what someone brought up, the shiny new nickel. Can you speak to that with regards to, especially what they're stating about teams from Chicago? Of course, it's basketball, not baseball, or the other things. If you could shed some light on to your ability as an operator to attract teams from a broader perspective.
Yep, absolutely. And by no means, you know, does this discredit any, any of the thoughts or, or anything that was said recently. And, you know, one of the things I would like to say is, absolutely, we'd love to work with anybody in this area how we can. One of the reasons I know we haven't reached out is, we're right at the starting line. And we're trying to get this to the point where we can get to the starting line. And once we have that ability to move forward a hundred percent. You know, the success of these venues, short-term and long-term rely on, you know, if we, if we just boil it down to simplicity, rely on three things. They're gonna rely on having the right market. And that's twofold. Having a right four to six-hour drive time, which I think if we look at the cities and markets within this four to six-hour drive time, it, it's a pretty dynamic market in terms of total population. And then the market needs to have things to do. You don't need an amusement park. You don't have to have the beach. But you do need to have clean hotels. You have to have restaurants that people are familiar with. So, when they bring their family of four, or five, or six, they know where they can go. And so, you know, and then having the added benefits of the historical piece of Springfield, having the downtown that you have. You guys have that market here. The second piece is you have... Um, the second piece is you have to have the right facility. Um, we're familiar with a lot of the facilities that were mentioned and a lot of the facilities, some of them are nice facilities, but they're very much sports oriented facilities with a collection of fields. And what we're talking about here is truly developing a destination. And so developing, we want the facility by itself to be a destination that brings people to this market. And then ultimately, you have to have the operator. And that third piece, you know, we, you know, we could argue is one of the more important pieces. And, you know, one of the things that we do bring to the table, you know, we've been around since 2003. We manage facilities around the country. We have great relationships across the industry and we represent the largest network of sports tourism events in the country. And so we are working with national brands and, and national event right holders who are looking to us at where we're going next. And so one of the things we do and the power of our brand and the SFM network is when we go into a market, our partners trust that, one, we've chosen the market correctly, that there's things for their families and their players to do. Second, they know we're developing a facility that's going to have their interests in mind to make sure that they can run the events that they're trying to run and be successful with it. And, and third, they know that our operations are going to provide them a good experience, not only for them as the event right holders, but also for their guests. And that last piece, the guest experience in this industry is everything. And that's what, you know, absolutely, this will be the shiny new nickel when it's open. And our job is to make sure it's the shiny dependable nickel in five years where events know, hey, when we go there, that city welcomes us, that city engages with our consumers. That operation is not only maintaining that facility to the highest quality, but their customer service is second to none. And they have a facility that's not only focused on the athlete and the parent, but also the brother and the sister, who at these, a lot of other facilities sit on a hot set of bleachers trying to figure out when they get to go home. And so it is a combination of all of those three things that need to happen to be successful. And it's not only here. Even in a destination, if you don't offer those three things collected together, these projects don't work. And, and so we can, I can stand here with confidence and say that our team, we now have over 1,100 people around the country that work and are committed to the mission and the vision of our company, which is to operate the best performing sports parks in the country and in the industry, while also having that mission to improve the communities that we're in.
Thank you.
Alderman Conley.
Thank you. I actually, um, Mr., I don't have a question for you. Mayor, I, I did have, and I apologize for not getting this in earlier. I did have one possible amendment if the council's interested. In, in section 5.8 accounting, the city has quarterly, um, reporting requirements that are included in this, but the developer's requirement is just from time to time. So I'd like to ask that we amend the agreement to have, um, at least twice annual reports from the, from the developer on the progress of the project.
Sure.
Would that be?
I second that.
Thank you. So my, like, it would change the language required by the city, change from time to time to be, um, no less than twice annually.
I'm sorry. No, you can. I'm sorry, go ahead, Alderman.
So just change the from time to time to no less than twice annually.
Yep. So it's been moved in second to amend the agreement for reporting twice a year.
No less than twice a year, yes.
No less than twice a year. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Is there any other speakers, Mayor?
There are. Pardon me?
Any other speakers?
Yes. I think, is there one more?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is Pete out there?
Not seen Pete.
Pete Christovolakis?
No. He was not.
So any other, did you have another?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Call the question.
Second.
Been moved in second to call the question. All those in favor of the motion as amended twice, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the motion passes eight voting yes, three voting no. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-164, an ordinance authorizing preliminary relocation of personal property located on parcels SR0126, KH4 LLC, and SRO129 Family Video Movie Club, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $647,500 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project Usable Segment III for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion placed. Agenda number 2021-164, and final passage.
Mr. Mayor, I've talked with some of the other aldermen about this. We're making some progress with Family Video. They just responded at four o'clock today. And we want to see that the 10 truckloads of earth is moved off the parking lot and some other improvements. And then we can vote, um, for this ordinance. Like to hold it two weeks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Second.
Been moved in second. All in favor to hold for two weeks, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-184, an ordinance authorizing execution of annexation agreement between the City of Springfield, Illinois and Bethany Chaussee for a property located at 25 Westwood Lane. Chair will entertain a motion to recess the regular meeting of the City Council to hold a public hearing regarding the annexation agreement.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We're adjourned for a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Does anybody wish to address this annexation agreement?
Motion to adjourn.
The vote moved to adjourn in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We are adjourned. The chair will entertain a motion to read adjourn the public hearing, reconvene the regular meeting of the City Council.
Will move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion placed, agenda number 2021-184, and final passage.
Will move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. The motion passes 11 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-185, an ordinance annexing certain described real property located at 25 Westwood Lane. Chair will entertain a motion placed, agenda number 2021-185, on final passage.
Will move, Mayor.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favors, say, uh, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2021-195, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2019-01-2020 to increase the city's borrowing authority from the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency Public Water Supply Loan Program for lead service line replacement project for the Office of Public Utilities for Emergency Passage. Chair will entertain a motion placed, agenda number 2021-195, on final passage.
Will move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes 11 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2021-203, an ordinance accepting the construction bid estimate and authorizing a contract with Halverson Construction for repairs due and painting of the Springfield Fire Department Training Tower for the Springfield Fire Department for Emergency Passage. Chair will entertain a motion placed, agenda number 2021-203, on final passage.
Will move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes 11 voting yes, none voting no. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend with the rules in place on first reading, agenda number 2021-214, ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement, cooperative, cooperative agreement with Sangamon County and Sangamon Mass Transit District regarding the construction of the east side of the Springfield-Sangamon County Transportation Center containing the bus transfer facility for the Office of Public Works.
Will move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Chair will entertain a motion to spend and place on first reading, agenda number 2021-215, an ordinance approving the appointment of William Luby to the Civil Service Commission.
So move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion placed, uh, to suspend the rules in place on first reading, agenda number 2021-216, ordinance authorizing the appointment of Sue Dai to the Civil Service Commission.
So move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place on first reading, agenda number 2021-217, ordinance authorizing an increase in the number of Class D liquor licenses by one for TKE One Lounge LLC doing business as TKE One Lounge located at 1701 J. David Jones Parkway.
Mr. Mayor, I'd actually like to hold this if we could right now.
Second.
Thank you.
So it's been moved to hold?
Yeah, now file it right now. Thanks.
All in favor of holding, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Present.
Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to spend and place on first reading, agenda number 2021-218, an ordinance to increase the number of Class AA liquor licenses by one for Whiskey Jacks Sports Bar LLC doing business as Whiskey Jacks for the business located at 430 East Monroe.
Will move.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Present.
Is there any unfinished business?
Yeah.
Alderman Henner and then Alderman Gregory.
Um, just real quick, Mayor, um, with all the craziness with the mask, do you mask? Do you not mask? Do you, you know, um, do we need to, do we need, we, we passed an ordinance that, that I thought we were very forward on getting, getting it done soon. Thank, thank you for that, for bringing that. Is it time that we repeal that, you think?
Yeah, Corporation Counsel.
And if, if we have to, I assume it has to come up, it has to be on the agenda, go through the, the motions, right?
Yeah, Corporation Counsel, if you can answer that.
The, uh, what, the, the proper way, I think, to handle that right now, we'll take, we'll take a look at the language again. Uh, I, actually, the mayor had asked me about it earlier. So you may remember during the COVID process, the mask ordinance actually is tied to an emergency.
Well, that's the next piece of, that I wanted to ask about.
And so to, uh, tomorrow, uh, the mayor has to do the matching executive order that will then match up with what the state says.
Okay.
And if you, if you recall, each, uh, what, what has been done has been to primarily make sure they were complimentary and so there were not, uh, if you will, inconsistencies. Uh, the mayor will sign a new executive order tomorrow, but it will sync up with the new regulations that the state is just issuing.
That, that was my next one. At what point do we, do we do away with the emergency, um, orders? And I know we did a lot with the, with the bars and restaurants to, to help them out. They're still going to be struggling, you know, they're still going to be dealing with the lower percentage of people coming in, I think, um, as we, for a while at least. Do we need to, do we need, I guess my question is, at what point do we, we remove these, both these and, and, you know, what effects that has on anything that we put forward? There was a lot of things that we did that, quite frankly, um, I, I think it would be good to keep some of this for, for our, our bars and restaurants. I thought that it turned out to be very positive experience for, for people, that people like to eat outside or, or whatever. And, and our, our liquor license rules don't allow for some of that. And, um, I think it's something we need to look into. So I just wanted to bring it up, uh, when we need to, if we have to, if we have to rescind it, we, we need to get it on the docket for the next council meeting.
Yeah, as far as the masks go, to, uh, you know, you can't turn back the clock, but my own opinion, CDC should have left it in place through May. And unfortunately, it didn't because you have graduations, everything else happening. But we do recommend people wear it if they have not been vaccinated. Of course, there's not going to be any enforcement. Um, so it is what it is. But with regards to the order itself, uh, we're hoping that the, we move to full phase reopening, which is June 11th. So, you know, you're a football guy, so you don't want to be like, uh, Biner or whatever, remember him? Got stopped at the one or whatever, fumbled on the one. We don't want to do that and have things shut down. And the frustrating part for the bars or restaurants, and this is why I took some heat by having the, uh, I said, I'm going to reassess the mask. I was at lunch at Joe Rogers Chili on, um, that Thursday, and I said, well, the bridge is tomorrow, Friday, it should be happy, you know, you're going to have your increased business? He said, no, this is it, you know, because of the rules of the six-foot distance. And so it didn't increase its capacity. And that's the frustrating part of that for the restaurants. You would hope, uh, that they were able to open up to 50% capacity, but we'll assess it probably at the end of May and see what things are. But, uh, we need to be consistent as much as possible with the state moving that direction.
Thank you. Did you want to talk about the parklets at all? Just very briefly, Alderman, you brought up, and the mayor's asked about the issue about the, uh, service of liquor outside. One of the items that, uh, is being worked on right now is parklets for actually for, for bars. And ordinarily, that's not allowed if you're not in a beer garden. So those are one of the areas, one of the initiatives that happened that I think, uh, it's going to be kind of relooked at in terms of what's happening. So your, the, the observation is one that I think the mayor's working on in terms of the parklets and thinking a little outside the box of maybe allowing the sales outside the premises, maybe in a parklet area that's not necessarily a beer garden. So that is going to call for a city code revision.
Yep, we'll take a look at all that. Alderman Gregory.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of questions. So we, we have Juneteenth coming up, um, very soon. And, and I have been asked multiple times where, where we at with the status of the holiday, um, and any, um, recognition of that for Juneteenth holiday, Mr. Mayor. Also, um, Black Lives Matter Solidarity Day, which was celebrated last year is coming up. I know we promised them a sign and to do a whole bunch of things. I just want to remind you, I've sent a couple of emails just to forewarn everybody that they are looking forward to that. Um, and my final, my final two things is, um, one is, do we have any progress on my police reform ordinance so I can get this?
Yes, yep. It's being worked on now.
All right, thank you. Um, and the last old business subject that I do have is, um, a couple of them. So we have a nuisance abatement on a, on a, uh, problem, uh, business in my ward. And, you know, I, I continue to ride by, I continue to see these, these issues. So what can we look at taking the next steps on to, to, to really, you know, whether we got to close them down a little earlier to send a message, um, you know, before we close them down altogether, but we have to do something because, um, you know, I ride by it quite frequently and, and it's always a, a party and, and we, we just cannot have it. It's tearing down that whole community. It's a church behind it. We, we gotta, we gotta do something else. And I'm not talking about my last complaint last week. This is a whole nother spot of us not talking names. Um, but, but I would just like to put our heads together and try to, try to remedy this situation. It's been a long time problem, even before I ever got here, and we got to fix it. It, it's time to, to, to really hammer it home, in my opinion. Um, yeah, my last point, and I'm sorry, you know, for taking this so long, uh, on old business, but I just want to say, this, this, this thing with this cannabis money for the east side guys, right? We made that ordinance, but, but, you know, I feel some type of way about it because every time we talk about things for the east side, we talk about, um, the cannabis money. The cannabis money is extra for the, for the damage that was done to, to communities like mine across this, this country as they gain the place. When we passed the ordinance, everybody had a chance to weigh in. And, and there is some places on the map, and, and, and I've had these discussions that, that, that do, um, have some areas, uh, of the war on drugs, other than the east side. And we had an opportunity to address that, but we didn't. We gave it to the police and fire pension. That was our choice. So I don't want to hear about every time I want something for our community that you got the weed money. It's disrespectful. And that's just my point on that. I'm ready for new business.
Yeah, on the Juneteenth, we're, uh, we'll bring it forward when we do the city holidays. You know, of course, it's this, I think, Saturday this year, next year, it's a Sunday. So it'd be with the intent of, uh, when it lands during the week, of course, the council has, uh, pass it, that'd be the paid holiday, but if it lands on the weekend, it, it's the actual day that should be celebrated. So, of course, it'd be celebrated, but not a paid holiday with regards to that. The Black Lives Matter sign, we're looking at a portion of Jackson Street that was dedicated to Harry Marshall Way.
And so, uh, we'll have that as the honorary and actually looking to rename that portion, uh, Harry Marshall Way with regards to Jackson Street. Thank you. Any other new, uh, old business? Alderwoman DeSenzio.
I just wanna address what Alderman Gregory said. We put that money towards wards two and wards three because the major component of the state legislation was social justice reform. That was the major component. And we recognize that as a council. So when it was holding anything over your head, we're just reminding you.
Well, I don't need reminded, that's, that's the problem. I don't need reminded.
Let her finish her statement, please.
We vote for everything in wards two and wards three. And if it's in any other ward, we're not sure we're gonna get that vote. And that's not right either.
Well, that's not true, but we can have that conversation another time, and you should definitely know why.
Oh, I know why.
I know you do.
I know why.
You should.
But, you know, we are allowed to have conversations here, Sean.
That's fine.
Without, without being called names when we leave this room.
Did I call your name?
Without being called, um, you know, horrible names, actually.
The community does that.
No, no, no.
I don't do it.
You do it.
Okay.
You do it.
Show it. Show it.
You've done it many times.
Show it.
This is getting too personal.
Show it, 'cause I can talk about what you did.
What I do?
Sending the video to the news and stuff like that, so hush.
Alderman Redpath.
We can go on and on and on.
Give me a break.
Point of order, Mayor.
Yep, if, uh, you direct the comments to the chair, and I guess I'll have to say that every meeting is, um, as a reminder, just direct the comments to the chair, if you would, and hopefully it, um, takes care of that. So Alderman Redpath?
I was just trying to call point of order.
Oh, thank you.
Very good move.
Any other, uh, old business?
Mr. Mayor, just.
Alderman McMinimum, and then Alderman Williams.
Sure. Just very briefly, I voted on two emergency ordinances, I knew nothing about tonight. I think they were, and I think they were good ordinances, but I knew nothing about them. Why? Because when we got to our seats, they were buried in 200 pages of ordinances on first reading. And for the last 10 minutes, I've been trying to find them to what we voted on. And so in the future, if it's on emergency passage, can we have that separately presented to us so we can find it easi, more easily, so we can know what we're voting on? It's just, uh, uh, it doesn't happen often, but we just have to make sure on emergency passage, we know what we got to vote on. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Williams.
So I just wanted to respond to the, the little debate that happened. So when we were debating legacy, you know, uh, the sponsors project, you know, that's gonna happen.
I was not the sponsor on that project, uh, the mayor was.
Alderman Williams has the floor, please.
Okay, so what's happening in your ward then? And that's fine, and I thought it was a good debate, and, you know, it was successful. But so when these things happen, I'm debating and I'm focusing on something that's gonna cost tax dollars, and then the example of the R3 money comes up, I don't, how much did that cost, uh, the city? You know, um, what, what I'm trying to understand is what one had to do with the other. I'm getting ready to leave this building, get back on the other side of town, and, and the phone's just gonna go, you know, how come you didn't tell her this? And why did she say? These are the little things that when it's unnecessary, we was having a good debate. I, I don't understand why that comment even had to come up. And then this comment, this exchange would have never happened. I just, I, I don't get that, so.
What comment? What, you know, why are we not allowed?
Listen, gentlemen. The comment that, uh, that you guys are going back and forth about, uh, the cannabis money. Why did cannabis come up during the Legacy Point debate? When one was being talked about spending taxpayers' money, and it was a good debate, and I thought everybody got theirs in, but then when you spoke, you said you didn't, you don't complain about the cannabis money. I didn't, I didn't get that.
Because you were saying, how do I justify this project that is going to positively impact the entire city? How do I justify that to my ward?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay, and I said, well, you know, people have come to me and said, well, why didn't, because I, as I said before, I share, I border Ward Two. For quite, quite a ways. And, you know, people have said to me, why didn't Ward Six get a cut of that? And I said, because that's not how it was designed. And I have a very socio-economically diverse ward. And I think Words Two and Words Three deserve that money. But I'm bringing up the point that no one else, you know, it's like, we're not supposed to get anything else. And I, I'm just trying to bring up the point that we all have projects in our area, and we all have interests in our area, and we all have constituents to, to answer to. Not just you, not just Alderman Gregory, not just Alderman Redpath. We all have constituents we have to answer to.
Sure, sure.
And some projects are going to be more popular in certain wards and less popular in certain wards. That's, that's just the nature of the beast.
Yeah, well, well, I, i- if you would have listened to my argument or debate with the, the gentleman, I was trying to find a way to support Legacy Point. I was trying to say, use our hotels, build on our site. I mean, I was doing all that type, I just didn't get it. You know, you brought up cannabis as if, oh, well, you guys got cannabis, so why are you worried about, you know, you? I don't see it like project to project. I just look at it for what it is, but I seriously had some game in this because of all the hotels that are located in my ward. So I really was sincerely trying to get them to agree to say, yeah, they're gonna stay. Yeah, we're gonna build on one idea. But they gave me the, uh, well, if, if, if possible, or if, uh, I forgot the word they were using, but they got wiggle room in all of the points, put it that way.
You have a lot more hotels in your ward than I do in mine.
Yes.
And we're supposed to be working up here as a team with a common goal of improving Springfield.
Yes.
And most Tuesday nights, it does not feel that way.
Yeah, the, uh, one thing I will point out, and, uh, actually, this discussion is, uh, healthy, believe it or not, because, uh, what was pointed out is with the cannabis funds, they were put in place, as you pointed out, Alderman DeSenzio, in the state statute, and Alderman Gregory is alluding to it for the specific purpose of helping minority population. So, uh, again, uh, the ARP funds, American Rescue Plan dollars are coming, significant amounts. And really, it's geared towards COVID recovery. And I know I've had this discussion with Nate Bottom, and, uh, it's not for the traditional road projects or the infrastructure project. It goes beyond that. Is it here? These are projects that are not gonna be reached normally. And so really, it's a deep dive into the areas that need it most. Because I am really tired, I think all of us should be tired, uh, how many road, uh, I'm gonna call Nate up here and put him on the spot. How many miles of oil and chip roads do we have in our community?
I got a lot.
Like 60 miles or?
You don't have any alleys.
I haven't got any alleys.
Go ahead, Nate.
And a 1909 railroad bridge that needs to come out.
Right. How many miles is it, like 60 miles?
A hundred, 180 almost.
Oh, 100, oh, gosh. But, uh, you know, we have areas that are, you know, uh, don't get the attention they need. And the issue that we see with federal funding, it's all a scoring system. So you're trying to score, and your most, uh, popular road projects will be done, whether it's Arch Elevator or Wabash MacArthur, uh, hopefully Hilltop one of these days. But, uh, with the ones that have been around for a long time, they don't see the help. So really, with the American Rescue Plan dollar, if we're still dissecting it, uh, we need to look at what's available, but really go beyond what typically is funded. And so, um, you know, y- each one of you should look at that in your wards. We do have the Ward Plan meeting coming up, and that should be part of that discussion. Because you wanna get those areas that might be hard to, uh, fund and moving in that direction. And, but right now, the infrastructure from my, the original view of it was water, sewer, and, um, I know lead pipe replacement and broadband. But, uh, we'll see what we can do on the road side of things and leverage as much as we can with regards to those dollars. But Alderman Donlin, then Alderwoman.
Mayor, I appreciate you bringing up the American Rescue Plan. I was going to ask this evening about, you know, if we've, if we've learned about the specific rules that are going to be applicable for our cities and the amounts and so forth. And, 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 uh, in respect for time this evening, though, I would, I, I'm gonna be reaching out to you and you and our corporate council, Zerkel, to, I'd like to sit down and talk about it and learn more about it and to see what opportunities are available to the city and, and, and of course, Ward Nine. So thank you.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and I, I'm gonna kind of piggyback on Alderman Donlin, but just real briefly. Um, I, I know that, you know, a lot of the CDC money right now for COVID response has, um, an equity focus to it. And I certainly, I, I'm assuming we're gonna be looking through that lens also with improvements to Springfield. Just wanna put in a, a word, the eastern edge of Ward Eight has had, you know, a significant amount of, I, I get reports of gunshots on a, on a regular basis in that area. We've got roads that need work, we've got sidewalks that are not, not great. So I just hope that when we come to this, that we, we are looking at, at all of our neighborhoods. And I've got, there are neighborhoods in my ward that I actually have people complaining to me, they don't want a new sidewalk. They don't, they don't need to have, sidewalks don't need to be torn up there. But I, I do have a, a significant portion of, of Ward Eight that, that definitely, definitely needs that attention. And so I think we'll probably need, I, I know everyone's gonna raise their hand and say they do too. I saw you, Alderman Phil Genzy. But no, I, I. I know that, and we listen. I, I would just ask that maybe as we develop the plan for how those funds are gonna be spent, that, that it's something that's, that's very inclusive of all, all wards, and, and that we have something that's, that's equitable for, for the need of, of each ward. And not something that just, you know, we have to debate every minute detail about, but, but just really have a, a broad stroke that, that improves all of our neighborhoods. Also, um, I have a lot of alleys that need work, and I forgot to.
Me too.
Mention that to Nate Bottom, so I will do that after this. Thank you.
Alderman Phil Genzy.
Since we're all talking about our ward needs. I know we're gonna have a Ward Four meeting on June the 12th at 9:30 at my place. And I would encourage any residents of Ward Four to come out for that, uh, Ward Four meeting and, uh, talk about the sewers in the north end and the blocked up, uh, drains. I mean, we've had tremendous problems that nobody in the city has had. I know you've had smatterings of it, but I guarantee you, we need boats out north.
We do too.
I could use a boat.
I'll take some alley money.
Everybody wants a boat now.
Any, uh, new business? Any new business? I do, uh, would like to call up Kathleen Alcorn real quick and introduce her to everybody. She's the, uh, appointed deputy mayor, and she's, I knew her back in downtown Springfield days over 20 years ago. But, uh, if you get, like to do a little self-introduction, um, we'd appreciate it. But the reason I appointed her was from, uh, you know, just her work ethic, but also her ability to have that working knowledge of government. She served on the Civil Service Commission, as well as, uh, you know, worked at the state and, uh, you know, with state government, but also with technology and as we're moving forward with the innovation areas, uh, I think it'd be very useful. So, anything you'd like to say?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much for having me here, and thank you for the appointment. Um, I do have a very long speech prepared.
I gotta do well.
Just kidding. Uh, the mayor and I have worked together in many capacities for many years, and we work well because of our bipartisan and inclusive approach to our community. So I just look forward to working with every single one of you. And I am an open door to continue the transparency in this administration. So thank you for having me here.
Thanks. Any questions? Are you?
Please give all your contact information for, to council coordinator Tim Griffin, so he can get that to Aldi Alderman. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, we do have three people signed up to speak. Tanya? Is Tanya here regarding, uh, House being torn down on Washington Street?
Hi, Mayor. I actually reached out to her.
Oh, good.
To explain what was going on with the project, so.
Margaret Franklin? Is Margaret Franklin here? Is Edward here?
No.
Wanted to speak about COVID? Okay. We need executive session. Uh, we do have a, uh, is there a motion for executive session to, uh, for pending improper litigation?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Or adjourned for executive session?
Motion to re-adjourn?
We gotta wait for the mayor.
Oh.
Motion to re-adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.